I'm sorry.
Thank you for the opportunity. That's fine.
That's very good. And then try it on.
Good morning. Happy holidays, everybody. I'd like to call this public hearing of the Committee on Health to order. Today is Thursday. It is Thursday. All right. December 11th, 2025. The time is 9:31 a.m. I'm at large council member Christina Henderson, Chair of the Committee on Health. We are in Room 412 of the Johnny Wilson Building. This is a hybrid hearing with public witnesses testifying both in person and virtually, and our government witnesses will be testifying in person. Today, we are considering two bills before the committee. Bill 26-356, the Prenatal and Postpartum Remote Patient Monitoring Clarification Amendment Act of 2025. On September 16th of this year, I introduced this bill along with council members Freeman, Lewis George, Nadeau, Parker, Pinto, and Robert White. The bill amends the Postpartum Coverage Expansion Amendment Act of 2020 to clarify that the Department of Healthcare Finance shall cover and reimburse for remote patient monitoring to improve maternal health outcomes for DC Medicaid beneficiaries. Specifically, the legislation requires coverage for remote monitoring for blood pressure and blood glucose levels during pregnancy and up to 12 months postpartum. Hypertension is one of the leading causes of maternal mortality. Research shows that remote monitoring improves maternal health by enabling early detection of blood pressure-related complications. This is especially critical in the district where around 5% of birthing parents experience gestational diabetes and around 8.5% experience gestational hypertension. The District's 2022 Perinatal Health and Infant Mortality Report, which hint, hint, DC Health, we're still waiting on our reports updated, identified a key goal in improving maternal health outcomes, that every pregnant woman receives patient-centered, high-quality prenatal care and remote patient monitoring that supports this goal. Notably, the council already passed this bill, well, a previous iteration. It was passed in 2020, and it was actually fully funded in the FY22 Local Budget Act. That law required that the healthcare finance cover a broad array of postpartum maternal health services, defined as, quote, "provider digital health interventions." So what happened? Well, during the FY26 Budget Oversight Hearing, Department of Healthcare Finance testified that they believe the agency had been underfunded to cover this broad array of services and therefore never implemented the legislation. Never implemented, never said anything. So here we are. Although they testified that they plan to incorporate remote patient monitoring in the transforming maternal health model, that model will not be implemented until 2030. By narrowing the scope of required services, I'm hopeful that this bill will be affordable and feasible to implement more quickly accelerating access to this critical care even in a physically constrained environment, especially when we consider we already paid for it. They just didn't do it. The other bill we are considering, Bill 26-463, the Judith Human Memorial Workers with Disabilities Act of 2025. I introduced this in November, along with Councilmembers Fruman, Lewis George Barnes, Allen Parker, Robert White, and Councilmember Nadeau. Before I outline, excuse me, the purpose and content of this bill, I want to acknowledge the disability rights pioneer for whom this was named. Known by many as the mother of disability rights movement, Judith Human dedicated her life to advancing civil rights for people with disabilities. Judith's activism led to the inclusion of Section 504 in the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, which later served as a model for the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990. She served as the Assistant, excuse me, the Pope, she served as the Assistant Secretary of the Office of Special Education and Rehabilitation Services in the Clinton Administration, and later as a Special Advisor on International Disability Rights in the Obama Administration. Between these roles, she also served as the district's first Director of the Department of Disability Services. Her legacy is a testament to the perseverance, courage, and power of collective advocacy. Late in life, she advocated for this bill to be introduced in the district to remove barriers and promote economic freedom. So I want to turn now to the substance of this bill, which establishes a District Workers with Disabilities Program, a Medicaid buy-in program that allows for those who are employed in the district but are living with disabilities to be able to maintain Medicaid coverage while working, as long as participants buy in, paying a modest monthly premium. The District Workers with Disabilities Program ensures that workers with disabilities are not penalized for earning higher wages, building savings, or even getting married. To be eligible for this program, you'd have to be a D.C. resident between the ages of 16 and 64, employed, and have a disability as defined by the Social Security Administration, and meet the program's enrollment requirements. Unlike traditional Medicaid, we remove the income limits, asset limits, and spousal income considerations. It is important to acknowledge, in this particular case, the district is an outlier among state Medicaid programs in not offering this option. There are only two jurisdictions in the country who don't have this: us and Alabama. Currently, the district's age, blind, and disabled Medicaid eligibility group caps the income at $1,300 and $5 a month for an individual and $1,763 for a two-person household, and a cap individual assets at $4,000 for a single adult. In a high-cost jurisdiction like the district, residents with disabilities should not be forced to choose between financial stability and their healthcare coverage. And so we should not be rewarding contribution, so, excuse me, we should be rewarding contribution and not restricting opportunity. I don't see any of my council colleagues who have joined. Obviously, if they get here, we'll certainly welcome them. We're going to turn to our public witnesses in our first panel. So just for everybody to know, you have three minutes to testify. It is not because we don't care about you or care about what you have to say, but we want to provide time for everybody to be able to provide some testimony. So if you have requested translation services, you'll have six minutes to include time for translation, and you'll be testifying at the beginning. Are we good? All right, let's get started. All right, so our first panel, this in-person, oh, okay. Charles Aswin Inko Tera. Okay, Dr. Rochelle Logan from D.C. Primary Care Association. Sarah Nicholson. And, okay, Anish Sebastian is going virtual, so Doreen Blue. Doreen here. All right, I don't see Salim. Okay, Robert Schaffert. Robin, oh, I'm so sorry, Robin. Okay, Charles, when you're ready.
Good morning, D.C. Councilmembers. Again, my name is Charles Alsing Inko Taraha, and I am a deaf-blind, orphaned, and abandoned war survivor of the War of Nigeria versus Successionist Republic of Bafra that occurred in 1967 to 1970. Ninety-nine percent trial and error, mainstream schools, self-educated, unaided. I'm a former bank clerk from 1986 to 1990. I'm a poet, an art author, and a publisher of three books and eight more masterpieces currently in manuscript, and an epic poem titled "Gloomy Fate and American Evil Empire", "Rumbling at the Jungle," available on Amazon and Kindle. A limited video version of the poem "A Gloomy Fate," using American Sign Language, voice interpretation, and captioning, is freely available on YouTube and Facebook for promotional purposes. I attended college here in D.C. at Gallaudet University from 1992 to 1993, and was a 25-year political prisoner in the U.S. from 1994 to 2018. I am currently on probation by the Federal Court of Washington, D.C. My books are sold in 16 countries via the Amazon platform. However, Amazon has engaged in unethical business practices. The government stands to gain from worldwide sales taxes, and I count on the fullest cooperation and financial support of loans, grants, and investments, as I plan to quit business partnership with Amazon Kindle Direct Publishing, and the goal is to establish my own book merchandising business. The worldwide market capitalization potential of 8 billion people keen on shelling out between $18 to $32 plus tax per book is enormous. Therefore, let me start by quoting a more memorable words of President John F. Kennedy. And I quote, "Ask not what your country can do for you, ask what you can do for your country." Instead of going cap in hand and asking for MedStar National Rehabilitation Hospital, it's the physician, medicine, and rehabilitation side located in northwest Washington, D.C., and this was back in 1996 to 97. And also, instead of asking the Department of Disability Services here in D.C., RSA, in southwest Washington, D.C., which occurred back in 2022 and 2023 for job placement, I was instead focused on building wealth creation through my own talents, risk, and supreme sacrifices, which include the entertainment of my book writing and self-publishing. And that will soon turn into jobs being provided. My books are in popular demand due to public curiosity. Despite my highly peculiar circumstances, I have been able to use my creative talents as an independently self-taught writer, poet, and publisher, as well as utilize personal savings to self-publish 350 books on a trial run without support from PNC Bank or the D.C. Commission on the Arts and Humanities, the National Endowment for the Arts. There have been multiple attempts to obtain grants from the Commission of the Arts and Humanities and Humanities D.C. since 2021, and I have been unsuccessful. Since the government stands to gain enormously from the creative works via worldwide, which would equivalent to about 10% taxes, I count on the fullest cooperation and financial support as a disabled entrepreneur. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to testify before the D.C. Council today.
Thank you. Dr. Logan. Yes, just press the button, there you go.
Good morning, Councilmember Henderson. I am Dr. Rochelle Logan, Chief Program Officer at the D.C. Primary Care Association. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on the Prenatal and Postpartum Remote Patient Monitoring Clarification Amendment Act of 2025. DCPCA strongly supports this legislation's intent to clarify coverage and reimbursement for remote patient monitoring, or RPM, for blood pressure and blood glucose during pregnancy and up to 12 months postpartum. RPM supports better management of gestational hypertension and diabetes, therefore reducing preventable morbidity. Clear reimbursement guidance is essential to enable our health centers to implement these services effectively, equitably, and sustainably. The March of Dimes 2025 report card released on November 17th provides all the information policymakers require to understand the urgent need to act. Despite attention and efforts from providers, policymakers, advocates, and families, the district worsened on every measure tracked in the report. We must use every available tool to change the course of maternal and infant health outcomes. Our people deserve better, and we can do better by leveraging these tools that support close and consistent monitoring of conditions that put health of birthing people at risk for adverse outcomes. Even more disturbing than our worsening measures is the persistent inequity in outcomes for Black and Brown mothers and their children. Remote patient monitoring is a critical tool to address these inequities. DCPCA member health centers cared for more than 5,000 mothers in 2024, especially for centers such as Mary Center, who you will hear from later this morning, the Community of Hope, and Unity Healthcare, which serve large and diverse prenatal populations. Clarifying coverage will enable these centers to fully leverage RPM to improve maternal outcomes for populations that need it the most. By passing this legislation, the district will strengthen clinical capacity and reduce preventable complications, ensuring every birthing parent receives high-quality patient-centered care. Lastly, I do want to note that the DCPCA supports the Judith Human Memorial Workers with Disability Act of 2025, and we will submit written testimony on this act before the record closes. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah?
Good morning, Chairwoman Henderson. My name is Sarah Nicholson, and I work at Baby Scripts, a digital maternal health company started right here in the district over a decade ago. I'm also a mom of two children who were born in the district. Baby Scripts was built to tackle the maternal health crisis through innovative, scalable digital tools, and our commitment to D.C. has only grown stronger. Today, we support a large share of the pregnancies in the district through our partnerships with MedStar Health, GWMFA, Community of Hope, and AmeriHealthcare in TOS D.C. We deliver screening tools, education, and remote patient monitoring to pregnant and postpartum patients across the city. We've seen firsthand the role these solutions play in addressing disparities, risk intervention, and ultimately outcomes. In 2019, D.C. was poised to lead the nation in innovating maternal care. The council passed the Postpartum Coverage Expansion Amendment Act, and in true forward-thinking move, recognized digital monitoring tools to expand access and improve outcomes. But as you stated in your opening statements, the implementation challenges are well-known. There was never a state plan amendment submitted, funding that was actually set aside to support these innovations never reached patients, and providers were left without a sustainable pathway to offer remote monitoring. As other states have raced ahead with maternal RPM coverage in Medicaid, D.C.'s early leadership stalled. Today's legislation, B260356, the Prenatal and Postpartum Remote Patient Monitoring Clarification Amendment Act of 2025, is a critical step towards correcting that course. This bill provides the clarity needed to ensure that remote patient monitoring, both prenatal and postpartum, is explicitly recognized, appropriately structured, and positioned to be implemented in alignment with federal guidance for the transforming maternal health TIMA model. It creates the foundation D.C. needs to finally operationalize the intent of the 2019 law and modernize maternity care for a Medicaid population. This clarity matters. Without it, providers serving Medicaid patients will continue to face uncertainty and lack the financial support needed to integrate these tools. With it, D.C. can finally move from pilot efforts and stopgap funding to a sustainable, equitable model that ensures all patients, not just those with commercial insurance, have access to early detection tools for high-risk pregnancies. Importantly, the timeline created by the federal TIMA initiative makes the passage of this bill even more urgent. D.C. Medicaid is already participating in TIMA and implementing prenatal and postpartum RPM now gives the district the time needed to evaluate what works well, identify gaps, and make informed decisions about how to allocate future federal funding for maximum impact. Today, I respectfully urge the committee to pass the B260356 to ensure that prenatal and postpartum remote patient monitoring are clearly authorized and supported in the D.C. law, and ensure DHCF has the resources needed to operationalize these services. This is a smart, cost-effective investment in maternal health equity, one that will save lives, reduce preventable complications, and rebuild D.C.'s leadership in maternal health innovation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Robin?
Good morning. I'm Robin Schaffert, and I'm a member of the faculty of the Georgetown University Center for Excellence in Developmental Disabilities, federally mandated and funded program of the Administration for Community Living of the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. Thank you, Chairperson Henderson, for the opportunity to testify today in support of the Judith Human Memorial Workers with Disabilities Act. I'm a middle-aged white woman with short, thick, silver hair, wearing tortoiseshell glasses, and a red suit with a white and black pattern. Many adults with disabilities are ready, willing, and able to work, yet because of the risks that the money they earn will make them ineligible for vital services.
Robin, we'll give you more time, but you do need to move closer to the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Or move it closer to you.
Okay, that's this, that's the corner problem.
No, just move it to the side. There you go, there you go.
Want me to start over, or just keep going?
You can keep going.
Okay. People remain unemployed, limit the hours they work, or avoid pay increases. The District of Columbia should remove this barrier to employment and join the 49 states that have established Medicaid buy-in programs to enable people to receive Medicaid services while working. As noted on the Medicaid.gov website, research has shown that Medicaid buy-in is not just good for beneficiaries and employers, it's also good for Medicaid. And analysis expenditures and services used showed Medicaid buy-in participants incurred lower annual Medicaid costs than other adult-disabled Medicaid employees. In 2023, 54.8% of adults with disabilities in D.C. were employed as compared to 85% of adults without disabilities, and the disparities in employment are even greater for Black people with disabilities than for white people with disabilities. Passing the Judith Human Act will advance equitable access to employment for people with disabilities. Medicaid is the primary payer of long-term services and supports which many people with disabilities need to live independently in the community. Retaining access to these services is critical. Since graduating from high school, one disabled 30-year-old D.C. resident has had a successful career as a federal employee. Hired as a GS3, he now works part-time as a GS5. He and his family, however, are forced to hope that he does not receive another promotion. Even a cost-of-living adjustment or a step increase could put his Medicaid eligibility at risk. For this young man and many other D.C. residents with disabilities, passage of the Judith Human Act would advance economic opportunity and equal opportunity and economic self-sufficiency. The Georgetown UCD strongly supports not limiting eligibility for the district's Medicaid buy-in program by income or assets. For people with significant long-term support needs, the cost of personal care can easily exceed $100,000 a year and is unaffordable at almost every income level. Increasing premiums as income increases is far more equitable. Two amendments to the current bill would strengthen the program. Participants in Medicaid buy-in should have access to services available through the district's Medicaid waiver. Participants in the EPD waiver can receive more hours of personal care than the Medicaid state plan provides. In addition, EPD waiver participants have the option to select and train their own workers. Participants in the IDD and IFS waivers can receive critical long-term employment supports and other services that are not offered through the state plan. In addition, the council should remove the proposed 65-year-old age limit. In D.C., the average retirement age is 67. age limit. In D.C., the average retirement age is 67. Participants in Medicaid buy-in should have the same flexibility as non-disabled D.C. residents to work beyond their 65th birthdays. For people born in 1960 or later, full Social Security retirement age is 67. People who start to receive Social Security benefits before full retirement age receive a small or monthly check for the rest of their lives. Medicaid buy-in eligibility rules should not force recipients to stop working before reaching full retirement age. The upper age limit for eligibility should be eliminated to provide participants the flexibility to work as long as each participant desires to work. And I just want to note parenthetically that I'm saying this on personal information as I turn 65 tomorrow and have every plan at the moment to go back to work next week. As the program is implemented, attention should also be paid to ensuring a smooth transition of services and supports into retirement. Thank you again for the opportunity to testify today, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you. Thank you to this panel of witnesses, and happy early birthday.
Thank you.
That's exciting. Thank you for the, well, actually, I'll just start with you, Robin, and the testimony that you've provided on the Medicaid buy-in bill. The recommendations that you made, I think, were good, and we'll take a look. I think for us, it's just, you think 65, but I think with the changes, as you said, in terms of average retirement age, but also when someone is eligible for Social Security, I think that's important.
Thank you.
Okay. And I also feel like one of the things that were kind of underscored here is that I don't want anybody to get penalized for getting a COLA or a step increase. That can now throw your entire health coverage in jeopardy. When we say that out loud to people, it does, it sounds crazy. And we have these other types of situations that we have in other benefit programs where we have what so-called benefit cliffs that truly force folks to make decisions that they wouldn't normally make or probably is not in the best interest of their career or their families, just to be able to hold on to their very vital health coverage. Now, I'm wondering, given your background in sort of this, do you have any idea as to why D.C. has not moved on this yet?
It's something that a number of us have been advocating on for years, and I don't know any policy reason. And I think I know that it is not something that certain aspects of the administration, particularly DHCF, have felt as critically important. And we disagree with that. We think it is clearly important because people should not be penalized for working. It's something that the federal government has supported since the passage of the Ticket to Work Act, and is a very successful program in our neighboring state of Maryland and the other states that I'm familiar with.
Yeah. The idea that there are 49 states who do this, which gives us 49 examples of how to implement this better or to do it right.
So you may recall that just a couple of years ago, under the leadership of Councilmember Nadeau, the district expanded its access to developmental disability services to people who had developmental disabilities, not just intellectual disabilities. And we were, I think, a little bit better than 49 on that, but also very late to the game. And that has been, I believe, very successfully implemented. And I think, you know, it's part of the district's commitment to equal opportunity, which is such a high value here and something we're all so proud of as D.C. residents, and really just an important gap to fill so that people can work. I mean, isn't that, you know, that's what everybody wants? Pay taxes, all that good stuff?
Yeah. I mean, well, our first witness, Charles here, an author, a poet, doing all of these different things. And so we want to be able to make that available to other folks as well. Let me turn to Sarah and Dr. Logan. Thank you for being here and for your testimony about the remote patient monitoring work. You know, Sarah, in your testimony, we said, like, D.C. was meant to be an early leader, and then we fumbled essentially the ball there. Do you have any, I mean, because Baby Scripts implements this program in partnership with others, have you all been able to collect any data or information that talks about sort of the cost-benefit? Not just sort of from a health side of things, but I guess also from the health side of things as well, of what this can do for a patient?
Sure. We have a lot of data around just engagement with that patient while they're outside of the clinic. How can you empower that patient to better understand how to take care of themselves? Pregnancy is a long period of time, as is postpartum, so making sure that they have the tools to be able to take care of their own self. We have good data on that. We've also looked at how we can use these tools to better identify high-risk situations earlier. We have data around two weeks earlier, we're detecting preeclampsia with remote patient monitoring, reduction in unnecessary utilization of the ED, and then also just being able to diagnose chronic hypertension earlier in pregnancies versus standard of care. So just having more touch points with these patients and being able to intervene more quickly when there's something wrong. There are a number of cases that we can point to to showcase that.
Thank you. I'm Sarah. I just wanted to add, in a previous life, I worked for the Health Resources and Services Administration, and we had a partnership with the Preeclampsia Foundation to provide remote patient monitoring tools to pregnant women. And what we saw on a population health standpoint was that pregnant women would share that tool with other partners, or neighbors, or cousins, or sisters. And so providing them with that support was really influencing community health outcomes and not just focusing on one individual patient. And so we have data on that, and it was really successful in a pilot that was across the United States.
Great. Well, thank you so much to all of you for testifying. If we don't have your written testimony for the record, make sure and get it to us. And we'll look for DCPCA's comments on the second bill. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go on to the next panel of witnesses. Well, in person, folks. Nancy Ban, CEO of Mary Center. Craig Lean from D.C. Family Support Council. Jacob Spedel, Spedel, Spidell, sorry, apologies. And Chioma Aura, Advocates for Justice and Education.
Okay, Nancy, when you're ready.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairperson Henderson and members of the Committee on Health. My name is Nancy Ban, CEO of Mary Center. We serve more than 65,000 participants each year, including over 2,000 pregnancies annually, many medically and socially high-risk. The Prenatal and Postpartum Remote Patient Monitoring Clarification Amendment Act of 2025 ensures D.C. Medicaid covers remote monitoring for blood pressure and glucose during pregnancy and up to 12 months postpartum. When complications escalate fastest and access is most fragile, this is exactly where too many mothers fall through the cracks. The mothers we serve want to do everything right, but life does not pause for prenatal or postpartum care. Many rely on public transportation and must plan an entire day around a single visit. And at work, taking time off often means lost wages or putting their job at risk. When a missed shift can put groceries, rent, and childcare in jeopardy, preventative care becomes a luxury, even when it's life-saving. A few months ago, I attended a national conference focused on new approaches to improving care access. In an innovation session, I described the tension providers feel every day, the moral injury of trying to balance margin and mission when coverage does not match clinical need. During a break, a national expert pulled me aside and asked, "Have you considered remote monitoring?" She shared how programs across the country are catching complications earlier, keeping patients connected to care, and easing the burden on clinical teams. I felt an immediate relief because it offered a tangible, practical way to protect our patients' health and preserve our caregiver's purpose. Remote monitoring allows clinicians to intervene early, prevent avoidable hospitalizations, and achieve better outcomes at a lower overall cost of care. It is especially critical because the conditions that harm mothers most, rising blood pressure, worsening glucose levels, and early signs of postpartum complications, are often silent until they are dangerous. Research also shows that when devices are provided, Medicaid and uninsured patients engage at the same rate as commercially insured patients, making this one of the few interventions that improves both equity and outcome at scale. Although this bill is not a pilot, it is an important first step towards scalable prevention first models. Mary Center would gladly implement remote monitoring for our highest-risk pregnancies, measure outcomes, especially ED avoidance and postpartum safety, and use what we learn to strengthen care moving forward. As evidence builds, this work can also inform future decisions about expanding remote monitoring to under or uninsured patients and to other high-risk conditions where early intervention improves outcomes and reduces costs. In closing, this bill strengthens continuity for families at the exact moment they are most vulnerable while laying the groundwork for a stronger, safer maternal health system in the district. Thank you for taking this important step. Mary Center stands ready to partner, to ensure its success, and to keep pushing maternal health forward so every family has a safer start. Thank you.
Thank you.
Craig?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. My name is Craig Lean. I'm the co-chair of the D.C. Family Support Council, and one of my colleagues on the council is here too, Chioma, although in a different capacity. I'm also the parent of a 20-year-old with autism and a significant intellectual disability who lives in the district and receives Medicaid. In addition to that, in the first Trump administration, I served as the Director of the Office of Federal Contract Compliance Programs, which enforces Section 503 of the Rehabilitation Act, which of course seeks to increase representation of people with disabilities in employment with federal contractors with a goal of 7%. So it's an honor to be here today, grateful for your leadership in pressing this issue. It's critical for the D.C. Family Support Council. We are the constituency board, an advisory board for the Department for Disability Services and for other departments in D.C. government related to issues regarding people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Several thousand people in the district who receive Medicaid or who are represented by our council. And then if you add to that the many other thousands of people who are parents, or caregivers, or family members. We have a large constituency, and this is very important to us. The labor force participation rate for people with disabilities in the United States continues to be very low, at about 22%, compared to 65% of people without disabilities. One of the goals of our country and of this government should be to increase representation of people with disabilities in employment. It's the largest source of skilled labor that's untapped in the United States and in our district. And it's a great opportunity, when we have a labor shortage, to try to increase representation of people with disabilities. And that includes people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. But one issue that comes up, and I think about it for my daughter, is that any chance that someone will lose Medicaid related to their work is a huge impediment to going into the labor force. And if it's even a debatable issue or risky, it keeps a lot of people out of the labor force, which also keeps them from being more independent and being able to be more autonomous, be able to have more funds, and also potentially be able to get off other public benefit programs. This is a huge issue that you are focusing on, and I think it's wonderful. I definitely would urge this committee and ultimately the D.C. Council to adopt this. It can make a huge impact for thousands of people with intellectual and developmental disabilities in D.C., and of course, the many, many more people who have other disabilities and who are in the divergent in the district. So I applaud you for doing this. Our council is here to help and support, and it's an honor to be here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Jacob?
Good morning, Chairperson Henderson and members of the committee. I am Jacob Spidell from Legal Aid DC, and I'm here to express our support for the Judith Human Memorial Workers with Disabilities Act of 2025 and recommend some adjustments to further improve the act. Medicaid buy-in programs for working adults with disabilities are already available in almost all states. They are a proven method of allowing working people with disabilities to buy into Medicaid by paying a premium when their earned income or savings would otherwise exceed eligibility limits. Medicaid buy-in participants have a better quality of life, provide more value to employers, and incur lower annual Medicaid costs than other adult Medicaid enrollees with disabilities. Those who meet the narrowly tailored eligibility requirements find these programs to be life-changing. Medicaid coverage is particularly important to workers with disabilities that require community-based services and supports not offered by Medicare and most private insurance, such as transportation and personal care aid assistance. These services allow individuals with disabilities to live more independent lives. The risk of losing Medicaid has forced workers with disabilities to choose between increasing their income and keeping their health care. A small increase in salary or hours risks losing critical services or becoming completely uninsured. While we strongly support the existing bill, we recommend improving it further by removing the maximum age for participation. Workers with disabilities older than 64 benefit from maintaining Medicaid coverage as well. Not all older workers qualify for Medicare, and Medicaid fills important coverage gaps in Medicare for workers who have disabilities and Medicare. The Balanced Budget Act of 1997 allows expansion in the Medicaid buy-in to individuals above age 64. This has allowed states to include older workers, and currently, 20 states have no age limit for their Medicaid buy-in programs for workers with disabilities. We recommend that the district join those states and allow older adults to also buy into Medicaid and increase their access to critical services. We also have suggestions for small improvements to bill text to help achieve the bill's goals, such as aligning the language for hardship exemption here with the wording used for hardship exemptions for long-term care Medicaid, clarifying when certification periods can be extended, and clarifying wording around Lee resources. All detail those technical suggestions in my written testimony. We thank Chairperson Henderson and all the sponsors of this bill for taking this important step in protecting Medicaid access for district workers with disabilities.
Thank you. Chioma?
Good morning, Chairperson Christina Henderson and other members of this committee. I am Chioma Ru, the Health Justice Project Director and Advocates for Justice and Education. AJE is a federally designated parent training and information center, the Family to Family Health Information Center for the District of Columbia, and a D.C. Title V implementer for D.C. Children and Youth with Disabilities and Special Healthcare Needs. This year, in collaboration with D.C. Health and Department of Healthcare Finance, AJE launched our community health advisory panel, a multidisciplinary body that brings parents, advocates, healthcare partners, and safety net providers together to identify system gaps and co-develop solutions. We are grateful for DHCF's leadership and partnership, especially from Director Turnage, Melissa Byrd, and Colleen Sanoski. Today, I'm here in strong support of both bills, the Prenatal and Postpartum Remote Patient Monitoring Clarification Amendment Act and the Judith Human Memorial Workers with Disabilities Act. In terms of the Prenatal and Postpartum Act, this bill would ensure coverage of blood pressure and glucose monitoring during pregnancy for full-year postpartum. Researchers clear that this is the right move to make. However, we do have some caution in terms of accessibility. AJE families, particularly during the height of the pandemic, reported barriers such as lack of smartphones, laptops, reliable broadband, difficulty using devices due to dexterity or sensory impairments, platforms not accessible for ASL, cognitive disabilities, or language access needs, and no technical assistance. So to make the bill more effective, we recommend that you add in device loans or subsidies, in-home or virtual tech support, accessible platforms with ASL captions and multilingual options, a dedicated helpline, integration with ADRC's home visiting support for D.C. families with mobility disabilities. In terms of the buy-in, the Judith Human Act, we know that this is, again, we stand in solidarity with everyone else's saying and know that D.C. is behind the ball, and we're glad that we're catching up. However, in terms of both bills, you know, both bills must account to the federal climate stigmatizing immigrant families. Without clear protections, many will avoid prenatal care, postpartum monitoring, and early intervention out of fear of the use of public benefits, even for their U.S. citizen children, which could trigger immigration consequences. We request local vigilance and public education efforts in ensuring that any Medicaid-related issue, cost share- cost sharing, or otherwise that puts mixed-status families at risk due to public benefits and the new regulation about public charge that, you know, would dispel any myths in terms of how people can engage with these changes in the system, which should help but may hinder in some ways inadvertently. These bills give D.C. a rare opportunity to strengthen maternal health, disability access, and workforce inclusion all at once. And we strongly support them and here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to this panel of witnesses for your testimony. I have a couple of follow-up questions. Okay. First, Ms. Ban, I'll start with you. Thank you for being here and for the work that you all do over at Mary Center. Can you say a little bit more? And maybe this is more a question probably for your... Well, not probably. It could be more a question for your clinical team, but nonetheless, I'm sure you have had these conversations with them in terms of... I don't want people to think that we would like do remote patient monitoring at this stage for every single pregnant person. But you talked a little bit about really assessing risk and for whom it's truly necessary for. Do you want to say more about that?
Sure. I think in my last testimony, when we were talking about a different subject, I talked about the percent of patients that have diabetes or the percent of patients that have hypertension. And so we would probably use our clinical teams to take a look at that cohort of patients and look at who would be the most attached to this would be the right thing for them to do going forward. So I'm not clinical, obviously. And so I can't answer it the way I probably should. But nevertheless, my clinical teams would evaluate that and then make that determination.
Okay. I think the part that you said around prevention first is something that we all can think about, especially if we're able to catch preclampsia early or hypertension early. And I actually feel like in some ways, remote patient monitoring helps to educate the patient around what's going on with their health and in some ways see in real time what you're putting in your body and what its impact is on your blood pressure or on your glucose levels.
So we have a... FQHCs in general, the national average is a 30% no-show rate. And we are more 15% to 18%, depending on what's happening in the community. And so many of the times when you ask, why is there a no-show? It's because of life getting in the way. Everything that I described, transportation barriers, they can't take off work, they thought they could. And so this allows you to be able to monitor the patient, allow them to have the flexibility to say, I can't come in, my boss will not let me take off. But you can make that call and say, we do need to see you. We see that something is happening. And so it's not just the follow-up for the sake of the follow-up. It's the follow-up when we really need to make that follow-up so that they are utilizing whatever time they have off to come in the right way.
Yeah. I don't think... For many people who have not gone through pregnancies, they don't realize how often you see your doctor's office if you are going to the regular appointments as you're supposed to, particularly towards the end of your pregnancy. You're literally there every week.
Correct.
They know you by name when you walk in because you're there so often. And so that could be very difficult for some people who, if you're an hourly employee or you're in a job that's in a, I don't know, some particular environment. If you imagine if you live in, you know, wards 5, 7, or 8, or someone's from a distance that doesn't have the strong transportation support, but your doctor's office is in the Foggy Bottom. That's a lot in order to sort of make that transition. I was only saying Foggy Bottom because I was downtown Foggy Bottom last night. And it took like 30 minutes to just get off K Street. And I was like, this, people do this every day, every day down there. Okay. I do want to turn to the other bill. Mr. Spiedel, you said in your... We will definitely take a look at your testimony in terms of some of the technical changes. And we always appreciate when folks come to us about like, hey, you might want to tighten this language on a particular definition because we know in legislation definitions matter a lot. I wanted to ask you, though, about... You said, I believe I heard you say, 20 states have no age limit. Was that... Did I hear that correctly?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Have those 20 states experienced like some, I don't know, impact in terms of how much the program costs because you don't have the age limit?
Not according to what I've looked at.
Okay.
And anytime we talk about the number of states, it's always a moving target. So, you know, here today, maybe it's 21. Maybe another state has removed its age limit. But based on the latest information I have, it's 20 states that have no age limit. And they don't seem to be experiencing significantly different costs than the states that do have an age limit.
Okay. I'm also just sort of thinking from the fact of like every other week or so, there's like some human interest story that's on the news that's talking about a senior who has now had to come back to work for some particular thing. And in most cases, it is around healthcare. Like some event occurred either to your spouse or to your partner or to yourself that that insurance didn't cover. And now you have to go work at the grocery store or go, you know, work at a movie theater or something to that effect in order to just be able to provide for your family. And so we'll definitely take a look at that as well. I want this to remove barriers for folks. You know, Mr. Lean, when you were talking about this is the largest source of skilled labor that is untapped. And not that this needs to be like a, because we need the workforce, but I'm also just sort of thinking about the other benefits that people get from work, whether it be, you know, now you're not isolated. Now you're leaving your house every day. And you're talking to other people and you're getting to know their folks. And it may be, it's not a six-figure job, but it is a job that is providing more benefits than just the paycheck in that I feel like a lot of people are missing out on that because they don't want to lose their healthcare, which is crazy when we think about it.
If I may, you know, and this is in a different context, but my daughter participated in the summer employment program for D.C. through her school, St. Coletta. And we were so excited for her to be part of that. But it was impossible to get information whether that would end up reducing her SSI. How could that potentially affect other things? And even though it's in a different context, and I remember I had to fill out a... Provide all this information to SSI to be able to just have her participate in this small program so she gets some work experience. And I will tell you later in her life, if she's able to work, and that work would in any way affect her Medicaid, she won't do it. She can't lose Medicaid. She can't lose Medicaid. And it's such an overwhelming concern. And the gap that was mentioned between what Medicare covers and what Medicaid covers is huge if you need that sort of in-home support and equipment and things like that. So this is a human rights issue. It's so basic for people. And work is right up there towards the top. But the one thing above that is health, healthcare. And so, you know, if you have to choose between them, you're going to choose your health, so.
Yeah. No, I mean, I think both what Chioma and what Jacob sort of mentioned, right? A lot of people say, well, if they're earning money, then they can get private insurance. It's like, private insurance, while great, and we appreciate what they do for the people for whom it works for, there are so many other services that are not covered that somebody would have to go either out of pocket or go without overall. I wanted to ask one other question, Mr. Lean. So Department of Healthcare Finance data shows that there's about 1,900 individuals with developmental disability waiver recipients, so IDD waiver recipients that we currently have. Now, as drafted, waiver recipients are excluded from this program. You have any thoughts on that?
Well, yeah. I mean, if we're talking about children, I'm not so worried about it because, you know, presumably they're going to have other supports. But if you're talking about like the DDS waiver, the IDD waiver, so not Katie Beckett, but IDD after they're 18, yeah. I'd be very concerned about it because the whole purpose of that waiver is that they don't consider income of the people with you. So, you know, the idea that, you know, the idea that you could have that, you could lose that or lose your Medicaid, that choice is... I mean, that's my daughter's situation. You know, she has the IDD waiver. And, you know, one day my wife and I won't be here. Hopefully, I'm going to try to live to 100, but, you know, you never know. So I worry about that all the time, but I just, she can't lose her Medicaid. That's the one thing I know. And she can't lose the support of D.C. And so that means that it just changes the way we can approach her work. So absolutely. And I think, and Chioma, I think that our D.C. Family Support Council, most of our constituents are on the waiver. So yes, for the council, we would, that would be a huge issue for us.
Yeah. I would just add really quickly that I don't think the language is clear that Katie Beckett waiver is not implicated in this. So any clarification around that would also be helpful. So thank you for flagging that. That's a big issue for working families, whether the parent has a disability or not, but definitely impacting disabled parents and youth that are joining the workforce to the problems that Craig just listed.
Okay. All right. We'll take a look at that.
Okay. And if I could respond as well?
Sure.
One of the areas where we did think it would be helpful to clarify language was around how people will enroll in this new program if they're already enrolled in Medicaid. Because the current language seems to suggest that you can't enroll through the buy-in program if you have Medicaid now. And part of the whole benefit is to know that you can increase your income and not lose your Medicaid. So we want to make sure we have a seamless system where you don't have to increase your income, lose your Medicaid, and then apply for the buy-in program.
Okay. All right. We'll take a look at that. All right. Great. Thank you guys so much. If you have your written testimony, please make sure you provide it for the record. Thank you. Okay. We're going to move to our next panel of witnesses. And these are virtual witnesses. So for the virtual folks who are listening, you'll have to affirmatively accept our invitation to become a panelist. There'll be a little box that pops up on your screen. We're going to do it in fives here. So Anish Sebastian from Baby Scripts, Mark Lovoda from the D.C. Behavioral Health Association, Dr. Clint Peebles, who's the president-elect of the Medical Society of D.C., Elizabeth Meyerholz from Disability Rights DC, and Spencer DeWittler from the Quality Trust for Individuals with Disabilities. Okay. Is there anybody in person who was hoping to testify who you might have missed your... Okay. You want to come on to the table? Yep. If you just... Yep. She'll grab it for you. All right. We're going to start with Anish. I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. But when you're ready.
Hi. Good morning, Chairwoman Henderson and the members of committee. My name is Anish Sebastian, and I am the co-founder and CEO of Baby Scripts. Thank you for the opportunity to testify and also your leadership in pressing this issue. Baby Scripts was a company founded in D.C. now more than a decade ago. We started the company literally side by side with obstetric providers here in the district who saw very early the warning signs of maternal health crisis unfolding, right? And together, we built tools designed to support them and their patients. And these are moms that, you know, span every ward in the city. We began in a small office that was over a decade ago. And today, we have a platform that delivers maternal care using technology nationwide. But D.C. has always been our home. My connection to this work is also deeply personal. My wife is an OB-GYN. She completed her residency also here in D.C. at Washington Hospital Center. And through her, I saw firsthand the challenges faced by providers in D.C., the high acuity, the strain on clinics, the preventable complications that was already spoken about today that arise simply because moms don't have the tools needed to support them between appointments or care that can be delivered remotely. That is why this legislation is so important. This is not something abstract, right? It's about, you know, mothers my wife cared for. It's about those clinicians that we worked with very early, side by side in the early days. And it's about ensuring that every woman in the city, especially those served by Medicaid, have access to the same lifesaving tools and support that commercial insurers readily provide. So we have partnerships today with MedStar, GW, Community Hope, and AmeriHealth Card Test in D.C. And we help thousands of pregnancies. We see the reality every day. Remote monitoring detects hypertension early, prevents medical emergencies, and gives providers the super valuable information they need to intervene before complications arise. However, currently, the decision to have these tools depends on whether clinics can afford it, not if a mother deserves it or not, right? And the council actually first, to your point, recognized back, recognizes back in 2019 when they took forward thinking stance on modernizing postpartum care. But without some clear statutory language and a sustainable coverage pathway, the implementation is stalled. And DC has fallen a little bit behind, you know, in the national reports. So I respectfully urge the committee to first advance and pass the B-26-356 to clearly authorize prenatal and postpartum rehabilitation monitoring, and finally, give DC the framework needed to implement it. And second, support DHCF with direction and resources required to operationalize these services and fully leverage opportunities like the TIMA model that was spoken about earlier. This is the moment where clarity, timing, and the needs are all aligned. So by moving forward now, the district can save lives, reduce preventable complications, and restore its leadership in the maternal health innovation space. Thank you for your time and happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Mark?
Happy to see you again today. Chairperson Henderson and members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Mark Lavoda. I'm the executive director of the District of Columbia Behavioral Health Association and award two homeowner. The District of Columbia Behavioral Health Association works to advance high-quality whole-person care for district residents with mental illnesses, substance use disorders, or both, including the 35,000 district residents our 35 member organizations serve annually. The council today reviews the Judith Hyman Memorial Workers with Disabilities Act of 2025, which creates a Medicaid buy-in program for certain people with qualifying disabilities who have incomes that otherwise exceed district Medicaid program eligibility limits. The district's introduction of lower Medicaid income eligibility limits in 2026 makes adoption of this legislation particularly valuable and timely. My testimony today will focus on a few key areas addressing eligibility criteria, monthly premiums, and scope of coverage that the text of the legislation as introduced could be strengthened. In laying out eligibility criteria, we're puzzled by language that would render individuals ineligible if they are current Medicaid beneficiaries. While this language might be a relevant consideration, upon review of an initial application, strict application of this language could lead to determination that an individual up for a renewal is no longer eligible simply because of current eligibility. This language should be stricken, or at least qualified, to avoid this presumably unintended inconsistency. In laying out monthly premiums, we're puzzled by inclusion of two different premia for individuals with incomes at or below 138% of federal poverty. At section 6A1, the bill states no premium shall be required at or below 138%. But at section 6A2 immediately following, the bill instead says that an applicant or recipient with income above 100% and below 138% should pay $25 per month. This inconsistency should be removed, and we believe no premium should be required at or below 138% of federal poverty, consistent with current Medicaid eligibility limits for people with or without qualifying disabilities. We would also encourage the council to consider amending the provision allowing the department to adjust the monthly premium amounts annually for inflation by specifying which inflation index. My written testimony outlines a few approaches to consider. In laying out the scope of coverage, we question the choice in the legislation to prohibit beneficiary enrollment in Medicaid managed care programs. The prohibition on managed care restricts beneficiaries from the way that the vast majority of the district's Medicaid program works. Unless the council believes this is a federal requirement for approval of buy-in program, we recommend that this provision should be removed. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I look forward to answering any questions you may have.
Thank you. Dr. Peebles?
Thank you, Chair Henderson. My name is Dr. Floyd Peebles, president-elect to the Medical Society of the District of Columbia. With more than 3,000 members, MSDC is the largest medical organization representing physicians in the district. Our mission is to ensure physician and patient well-being in the District of Columbia through the promotion of high-quality accessible care in a changing healthcare environment. We thank you for the opportunity to testify today on behalf of B-26-463. I commend you and the council members in introducing this bill for highlighting the work and the life of Judith Human. Her long career of civil service, both nationally and locally, deserve to be commemorated. And this bill honors her legacy by ensuring that district residents living with disabilities can pursue employment and economic independence without losing access to essential health coverage. As physicians, we care for many patients with complex chronic conditions whose health depends on stable uninterrupted coverage. One of the biggest stressors on the patient-physician relationship is changes to that coverage. MSDC supports creating a pathway for individuals living with disabilities to continue receiving care without disruption through a Medicaid buy-in program with income-based premiums and clear eligibility rules, all reflecting meaningful steps toward reducing those disruptions in care and preventing patients from falling through gaps in the system. We particularly appreciate the provisions that allow adults living with disabilities to maintain Medicaid coverage even as their earnings increase, establish 12-month certification periods to reduce churn, and permit independent accounts so individuals can save for the resources required to remain in the workforce. However, implementation will matter greatly. My word of caution today is to ensure that DHCF and the relevant agencies create a seamless system to report changes in coverage. Even small changes can delay treatment, interrupt medication access, and create administrative burdens for both patients and clinicians. Proactive and automatic communication for all involved regarding eligibility changes, premium requirements, and benefit details is essential. Another stressor is when patients transition to different insurance coverage, and our offices need to work with the patient to determine and verify what coverage they have and how to bill the relevant entities appropriately. We ask that DHCF create a clear plan for sharing what benefits apply when and how they will communicate beneficiary changes to clinician offices. And we encourage DHCF to engage practicing clinicians as it develops these regulations to ensure they are workable for those delivering care to those who need it. And I would also note that we do support some of the considerations just mentioned by Mr. Lavoda in his testimony. And with that, thank you for your leadership and for the opportunity to testify today. And thank you so much for having me.
Thank you, Dr. Peebles. Elizabeth?
Thank you, Chairperson Henderson. My name is Elizabeth Meyerholz, and I am a staff attorney with Disability Rights DC. DRDC appreciates the opportunity to testify in support of the Judith Human Memorial Workers with Disabilities Act of 2025. We are the designated protection advocacy program for DC and are federally mandated to advocate on behalf of all district residents with disabilities across the lifespan to promote their rights to community inclusion. Medicaid buy-in programs break down barriers to employment for people with disabilities. Due to Medicaid's income cap, many individuals end up facing a difficult choice, pursue employment and risk no longer qualifying for Medicaid, or keep their health care and forego potential future earnings. Even if individuals are enrolled in employer-sponsored insurance, these plans typically do not cover vital services that support disability-related needs. Personal care aid services are rarely, if ever, covered under private insurance. Private insurance also often only covers very little of expensive durable medical equipment. Medicaid covers these costly items such as motorized wheelchairs or communication devices, essential technology that makes it possible for individuals with disabilities to access their communities and continue working. Though DRDC supports this bill, we do encourage the council to consider some changes. First, the current bill covers only individuals between the ages of 16 and 64. DRDC understands that the rationale for this age cap is that individuals may be covered by Medicare once they reach age 65, but Medicare and Medicaid are not equal. Medicaid covers vital benefits that Medicare does not typically cover, such as PCA services. DRDC encourages the council to lift the age limitation of the buy-in program. Second, as currently drafted, the bill does not allow individuals participating in the program to access the district's elderly in persons with disabilities waiver, intellectual and developmental disabilities waiver, or individual and family support waiver. These waivers provide services that are critical for individuals to live and work in the community. DRDC represented a client with an intellectual disability who depended on in-home support services she received through the ADD Medicaid waiver. She feared that a new job, while it would help her financially, would cause her to lose her Medicaid and the waiver supports she needed to be safe in the community. Another DRDC client fears losing his Medicaid as a result of his combined employment income and unearned income. His medication is very expensive, and he relies on supports he receives through the ADD waiver both at home and at his job. Individuals such as these clients who participate in the buy-in program should be able to access the full range of benefits Medicaid offers, including waiver services. Third, the current language of the bill excludes anyone who is currently an inpatient in an institution for mental illness. DRDC urges the council to reconsider this exclusion as individuals may be discouraged from seeking mental health treatment to maintain their health care. DRDC's written comments more fully explain our suggestions in these areas. Those concerns aside, this program would promote community inclusion, economic independence, and healthcare stability. Thank you.
Thank you. Spencer?
Good morning, Chair Henderson. My name is Spencer Detwiler. I'm a staff attorney for Quality Trust for Individuals with Disabilities. Quality Trust is a nonprofit organization that has been advocating for the interests of DC residents with developmental disabilities since 2001. Quality Trust monitors the quality of the services provided to people with intellectual and developmental disabilities and advocates for whatever changes or improvements are needed to enable people to live full, healthy, and meaningful lives. Since our founding, Quality Trust has supported thousands of people with disabilities through our legal, lay advocacy, and monitoring programs, as well as systemic initiatives. We are testifying in support of B-26-0463. This bill would finally introduce a Medicaid buy-in program for district, a program available to support the employment of people with disabilities that already exists in every state except for Alabama and, of course, the District of Columbia. Under this bill, workers with disabilities would be empowered to participate in Medicaid if they have significant long-term support needs related to their disability. Nearly 104,000 DC residents have a disability, and many of these residents are forced to spend significant amounts on necessary services, such as personal care aids, supported employment, and in-home supports. And the remaining income for food, shelter, and clothing then falls below the federal poverty line. They have as much or less ability to purchase essentials as non-disabled residents who do qualify for Medicaid, but as of today, they remain ineligible. This bill would finally allow these disabled residents to access to life-saving Medicaid benefits while working. However, we believe the council should consider removing the eligibility age limit of 65 years because there are aging disabled individuals who cannot get the long-term supports and services they need from Medicare alone. These individuals may also continue working but cannot access the long-term supports and services they need from work provided insurance. We are aware that other states' Medicaid buy-in programs are moving away from age limits because the administrative burden of enforcing the age limits is higher than the cost of not having any. Again, Quality Trust strongly supports B-26-0463. And we urge the council to pass this legislation without the age limit. Thank you for the opportunity to submit testimony. I am happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Thornton. Yeah, you just need to hit the button in front of you to turn on your mic.
Sorry for the coughing.
No, it's okay.
But good morning. Good morning, Honorable Councilmember Henderson and members of the Committee on Health. My name is Ricardo Thornton, and I used to live at Forest Haven, which is a district institution, as did my wife Donna and my brother William. I am here as the co-president of Project Action, DC's largest and active self-advocacy coalition. All of our members and leaders are adults with disabilities. We represent the interests of hundreds of people with disabilities in the DC and our partners with others, locations, national disability organizations. I like the DC Center for Independent Living, the State Rehabilitation Council, and the American Association of People with Disabilities, and TASH, and on and on, and other coalitions. I also served on the President's Committee on, appointed by Obama to serve as the, as a member of his Committee on Human Services. Let me get back on page, okay. I have worked at the Martin Luther King Library for 40, I've worked at the Martin Luther King Library for 49 years. My wife Donna worked at Walter Reed for 30 years, for over 30 years. My brother William has retired, working at Catholic University until his retirement. A few years ago, we all paid taxes and contributed to our community. We all had disabilities, but none of us had physical or other types of disability, but we would have, would have to qualify people assistance services. We all would have had to re-sign our jobs, resign our job, so that we could qualify for Medicaid services. I strongly, strongly support this bill in hoping that you will continue to support people with disabilities and their workforce. Judy Human, who we all knew well, needed to pay for her own personal assistance. And as her husband, mostly people with disabilities would have not been able to do that. Judy started working on getting a Medicaid buy-in with the DC about 20 years ago. We are one of the only few states without it. That means that people with, that means that people with needs the kind of services that are covered under the Medicaid, the Medicaid waiver cannot give them jobs guarantees. I'm going to break it on home. There's a lot of good stuff here. Project Action is very excited that DC is planning for the Medicaid buy-in with disabilities, as one of, as some of who worked in DC get services and as an advocate for others who receive services from over 35 years. I speak from personal experience about the needs of Medicaid buy-in. We are so happy that so many members of DC council of supporting this Medicaid buy-in for the workforce. People with Disabilities Act, that means that we can continue to contribute in this community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton. And thank you so much to this panel of witnesses. I'll start with you, Mr. Thornton. I'm so glad you walked in. I mean, you made it because I do feel like your testimony speaks to the important need here. Now, I'm going to take a wild guess. So you worked at MLK Library for 49 years. I'm going to assume you are retired now. Okay, all right. So, but I love that you're here advocating for a program that perhaps you can't benefit from now, but you could have benefited from if it was available to you and to your brother and to your wife. All right, well, thank you for being here and for continuing to advocate on behalf of others. I will have a couple of follow-up questions for the rest of the panel. I'll start with Mr. Lavoda. So I think in sort of crafting this legislation, we have a lot of sort of back and forth on trying to figure out what is the best way to kind of do this. And some of this is, it can't be figured out through legislation, but it might be needed to figure out in a regulatory standpoint or something to that effect. But individuals who are inpatients at institutions for mental illness cannot participate in the program as it's currently drafted. We've heard from some stakeholders that in practice, this could lead to residents who have a short stay at a facility losing coverage. I'm curious what your thoughts are on sort of the best way to kind of move forward on this.
Yeah, I think that we need some clarification from the Department of Healthcare Finance about what federal limitations there might be. And my thought about it was also that there might need to be a duration established to say that if someone is in an institute for longer than 90 days or some other threshold, then they would no longer be covered under this option. I suspect that the requirement that people are working may also practically mean that this will have less effect. But to avoid any of those concerns about short-term stays, I do think that there would be some value in identifying whether or not there could be a provision that just includes a timeline or a timeframe.
Okay, and I also do want to state, and I know that Director Turner has just probably been bringing this up in his testimony. We knew, we do know that there were a couple of technical errors in sort of the introduction on drafting around premium, no premium. We didn't intend for individuals below 130 to not have a premium. That was just a, you know, sometimes.
Yeah, these things happen, and that's why.
For impressions of bills and things happen in that way. But, you know, thank you for being here, Dr. Peebles. Thank you for the support of the Medical Society in terms of this work. Elizabeth and Spencer, thank you so much. And we'll certainly take a look at your written testimony for some of the other recommendations that you both brought up. Mr. Sebastian, I did want to ask you in terms of with Baby Scripts. First off, I love that you were born in the district in terms of the company being born here. I do believe that you have experience with the company working with other states. And I wonder if you could speak to the comparison of working with states that do reimburse for RPM versus through Medicaid versus states that don't.
Yeah, it's a good question. Thank you for that question. I think fundamentally, the most important thing I'll mention here is it's a point about access, right? When you, when states offer RPM programs, you're able to just improve access to care. That's true both in rural settings, but quite frankly, also in urban settings where, you know, I think, I think as other testimony pointed out, you know, getting to a clinic, it can be, can be, you know, very challenging. Getting out of Foggy Bottom could be very challenging, right? So and access is purely correlated, and the evidence is very clear on this, to better quality, better outcome, and ultimately lowering the total cost of care. So whether that be reduction in readmissions, reductions in, you know, unnecessary ED appointments, or just reductions in, you know, adverse outcomes in the maternal, you know, prenatal and postpartum time period, it all sort of adds up, right? So fundamentally, I think this is all about just improving access. That's what it just comes down to.
Okay, yes, I think you're right. At the end of the day, this is all about improving access, both of these bills, one for remote patient monitoring and the other about improving access to not just health insurance, but also a stronger quality of life. All right, I'm trying to keep within my own clock. See, I put myself on a clock too. So thank you so much to this panel of witnesses. We have one more panel, and then we'll turn to our government witnesses. So thank you all for being here. And if you haven't provided your testimony for the record, please make sure you do so. Thank you. Okay, next we have Paula Edwards, Commissioner for ANC 4A, Josh Basile, Lisa Haratun, Wes Holloway, and Taylor Price. Again, if you're joining us virtually, you have to affirmatively accept our invitation to become a panelist so that you can present testimony. A little box pops up on your screen. Just click that. Okay, hold on one second. All right, I don't see Paula, but I do see Josh. When you're ready, Josh.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman Henderson and members of the committee. My name is Josh Basil. I'm a C-45 quadriplegic, an attorney, and a graduate of the UDC David A. Clark School of Law, where I completed over 800 hours of clinical work in the district. As a teenager, a wave broke my neck and paralyzed me below my shoulders. And in the earliest days, I was on a ventilator that took away my voice. I promised that if I ever got my voice back, I would use my words to break down barriers for people with disabilities. Today, I mentor and advocate with DC residents who too often must choose between keeping Medicaid and attending care or having a job in the future. In Maryland, I faced those same barriers when limits in the Medicaid buy-in on earnings, savings, and ability to marry meant I could lose the care that I get to be, to get out of bed each day. So I worked with Maryland leaders to change the law. And as of January 1, 2024, once a person with a disability enrolls in Maryland's Medicaid buy-in, there are no income and no asset limits on earned income. There is a $10,000 asset gate to qualify for non-married individuals and a $15,000 gate for those that are married. But once you're in the program and in the Medicaid buy-in program, you can work to your full potential. And because of this reform, my family are now expecting another baby boy in April 2026, something that would not have been possible if I had to cap my earnings or give up my Medicaid. Until about two years ago, Tennessee, Alabama, Florida, and the District of Columbia were the last jurisdictions without a Medicaid buy-in for workers with disabilities. I helped a good friend. I helped a good friend in Tennessee, who's also a quadriplegic, to bring forward a similar bill to that of Maryland. But they also put forward a provision to lift the age 65 limit. And that bill on the first try passed the legislature and was signed into law as Tennessee's first Medicaid buy-in program for workers with disabilities. Today, the only place left without a Medicaid buy-in is now Alabama, Florida, and DC. This DC bill goes back to a conversation that I had with Judy Human before her passing. I shared with her the urgent need of a Medicaid buy-in in DC, just like Maryland. And she told me, Josh, let's make it happen. And even though she's no longer with us, we are here today to carry that promise forward. The Judith Human Memorial Workers with Disabilities Act is not just a healthcare bill. It's a jobs bill and a marriage bill. It lets DC residents on Medicaid keep the healthcare and attendant care they rely on while working, paying taxes, paying premiums, and no longer being punished for marrying someone who works. Come on, DC, it's down to you, Alabama, Florida. Let's get your name off this list and bring jobs to the Disability Committee in DC. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. I already told you, I don't like to be in this group of states. So Lisa.
Good morning, Chair Henderson and members of the Committee on Health. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on behalf of the Bipartisan Policy Center, also known as BPC, as you consider establishing a Medicaid buy-in program. My name is Lisa Heratunian, and I am Managing Director of the Health Program at BPC, a nonprofit that brings together diverse perspectives to craft data-driven pragmatic policy solutions. BPC has produced several reports on the Medicaid buy-in program, and my testimony reflects findings on its impacts and considerations for program design. Individuals with disabilities have much, are much less likely to be employed than those with no disabilities. The fear of losing Medicaid coverage, particularly home and community-based services, or HCBS, is a major barrier that keeps individuals from maximizing their employment, earning potential, and independence. Buy-in programs help to address this barrier by allowing individuals with disabilities to work and retain their Medicaid coverage, or to use their Medicaid to access wraparound services, including HCBS, that are not covered under employer-sponsored insurance or Medicare. The buy-in program, which has been adopted by 47 states, is associated with increased employment and earnings, while also having a positive impact on employers and state and federal governments. Evidence from Washington's buy-in program, for example, shows that one year after enrollment, participants were four times more likely to be employed than compared to non-participants with disabilities and worked 193 hours more on average. As an analysis of the Nationwide Social Security Administration earnings data also showed, an average of 40% of participants increased their wages upon enrollment in Medicaid buy-in programs. As participants' earnings increase, the average contributions to state revenues via income taxes and health premiums also increase. In Kansas, buy-in participants increased the amount of state income taxes from an average of $74 to $123 annually between 2003 and 2006. And the state experienced a 41% decline in monthly Medicaid expenditures for buy-in participants from 2007 to 2011, driven largely by reductions in outpatient costs such as doctor's visits. Now, federal law provides states with broad flexibility in structuring buy-in programs, including the option to set premiums or other cost-sharing requirements, or allow participation for individuals ages 65 and older. Premium and cost-sharing design directly affects whether individuals with disabilities believe they can work and afford to stay enrolled. If premiums become too high, workers may reduce earnings or leave the workforce. Conversely, for higher earners who rely on Medicaid HCBS to supplement private insurance, paying a premium can still be far more affordable than purchasing HCBS privately, while ensuring resources are directed to those with lower incomes. Most states reported premiums for buy-in enrollees, with the median premium being $25 in 2025. And additionally, restrictive age limits can reduce employment opportunities for people with disabilities who want to work past age 64 without risk of losing HCBS, which is not covered under Medicare. Over 18 states allow participant, participation beyond age 65, providing workers with continued access to essential services that support employment. So buy-in programs thus remove a key barrier to employment for individuals with disabilities who want to work. And these program design decisions directly shape their impact. Robust consumer outreach and engagement will also be important to the program's success. Thank you again for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Wes?
Good morning, Chair Henderson, members of the committee, and thank you for your opportunity to testify. My name is Wes Holloway. I'm 41 years old, quadriplegic due to traumatic spinal cord injury, and a Ward 1 resident. I'm paralyzed from the chest down with limited use of my hands and arms. I rely on the DC Medicaid Home and Community-Based Waiver Program for personal care that lets me live at home in Shaw instead of a nursing facility. A personal care attendant helps me with basic activities of daily living, like getting in and out of bed, dressing, bathing, using the bathroom, and transferring to and from my wheelchair. Without that care, I could not safely live in my own apartment and participate in my community. Today, I teach at the Corcoran School of Arts and Design at George Washington University, where I've been adjunct professor for the past four years. Sorry. I love my students and I want to grow my career. But my earnings are capped by policy, not by my ability. I, if I accept more classes, earn higher wages, or receive health benefits through university, I risk losing the Medicaid services that keep me alive and independent. In that situation, most of my paycheck would go to paying towards, paying for my caregivers, leaving very little for rent, utilities, food, and other basic costs. The Judith Human Memorial Workers with Disabilities Act of 2025 would change that. By creating a Medicaid buy-in program for workers with disabilities, this bill would allow people like me to keep our Medicaid coverage and long-term supports while earning more, paying taxes, and paying premiums into a system. Instead of turning down work, staying under eligibility limits, I could, instead I could teach and pursue advancement and be paid closer to my full value. This bill would let me move from just surviving to having a stable, sustainable life. I'm not asking for special treatment. I'm asking for the opportunity to work to my full potential without sacrificing my health independence to do it. Many other disabled residents in DC face the same trade-off between work and care. I respectfully ask that you pass the Judith Human Memorial Workers with Disabilities Act with unanimous support so that residents like me can build careers, contribute more through taxes and premiums, and remain safely in our homes and communities. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Wes. Taylor?
Good morning, Chair Henderson and members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Taylor Price, and I'm 40 years old and live in the West End neighborhood of Washington, DC. On July 8, 2004, I sustained a spinal cord injury while diving in the ocean that instantly rendered me a quadriplegic. Overnight, I went from being fully independent to being fully dependent and now require 24/7 live and care for almost every part of my life. I work hard to be as active and involved in the community as possible. That is only possible if I have reliable care. While, when I was injured, I was about to start my freshman year at Georgetown University. After deferring a year, I did actually move to DC and have been a district resident ever since. I earned two degrees from Georgetown, became the first quadriplegic to intern at the White House under President Obama, and worked for eight years at the Department of Homeland Security before transitioning into the private sector at a tech company that's founded in DC. This city invested in me, and I have tried to repay that by getting an education, working, and contributing to my community. But even with all of that, I live in constant financial crisis because of how DC's policies work today. Because there's no Medicaid buy-in program for workers with disabilities, I have to forego Medicaid and pay out of pocket for my care in order to keep working. For full transparency, what I pay privately for my caregivers each year is more than my base salary. I start every year in the red and spend the rest of the year fundraising and asking friends and family to help fill in the gaps. I am single and do not yet have children. But if I did have to support a spouse and kids on top of those costs, it simply would not be possible for me to remain employed. Most people with significant disabilities in DC look at this math and conclude they can't afford to work. So they stay out of the workforce just to keep Medicaid and, and the care they need to survive. At the same time, DC spends meaningful dollars through vocational rehab and to help disabled residents get educated, trained, and ready for employment. But then they pull the rug out from under us the moment they have to earn too much money to stay on Medicaid. The Judith Human Memorial Workers with Disabilities Act has a chance to fix this. A Medicaid buy-in program would allow workers with disabilities to keep the Medicaid coverage and personal care we rely on while working, paying taxes, and paying premiums into the system. It would make life financially sustainable instead of crisis to crisis, and would give many others the chance to work. I'm asking for you to pass this bill with unanimous support. DC can and must do better for residents with disabilities who want to work, support themselves, and remain active members of the community. My future is at stake, and so are the futures of countless others who are watching to see whether DC will finally give us a fair chance to work to our full potential. Thanks so much for this opportunity, and let's all work together on this.
Thank you. Thank you to this panel of witnesses. And special thanks to, to Josh, Wes, and Taylor for sharing your personal stories and for advocating, frankly, on behalf of yourself and others in this, in this, who are, who are impacted by this. Josh, I wanted to ask a follow-up question because you were so involved in the work that happened in our neighboring state of Maryland. You mentioned in your testimony that the bill that Maryland passed didn't include income and asset limits. Can you say more about the age limit question, which has definitely come up here in testimony today?
So yes, with the, the age limit, we're, we're actively trying to remove the age limit because the reality of the day is when you have a significant disability or you're in Medicaid and you rely on long-term care supports, you can't always choose when to retire. And being able to, to say that you have to retire at 65 because you hit that mark, it just, it, it, it really impacts your ability to take care of yourself, your future, your family. And so it's just, we've seen across the country, states by state by state lifting the age 65 limit because they, they know it has better policy to keep people with disabilities working, keep them paying taxes, paying premiums, and letting them be a part of the system rather than kind of, as Taylor said, having the rug pulled out from underneath of them, whether it's in the beginning days or the end days. All of us, whoever, whoever's in this room today or listening should have the, the ability to choose when they retire and not be forced to retire.
Yeah, I definitely agree with that. And I think, Taylor, you brought up a very good point, right? We pay to train folks. We pray for them to go sort of through this educational process. And then we say, wait, 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 you, you can't, or you can only do so much in that regard. Wes, can I ask a question? I'm just curious in terms of like the conversation from your perspective with an employer of an example of what folks with disabilities would go through is that you clearly have a, a skill and talent to be able to teach at GW. And, you know, adjunct professors make certain rates or certain other things. But have there been instances where they have approached you to say, oh, my gosh, Wes, we would love for you to take on another class, and you've had to decline that?
Yes, multiple times. The first semester that I started teaching, I worked a semester load and loved it and was able to and was fully prepared to do it the next semester. And then found out that I was making too much. So I had to tell my bosses and the dean not to schedule me for more than one class the next semester. And then I have to be very cognizant on what I take on in each semester. Even in a role of, this semester I took on or was, I guess, honored to kind of take on the role with the full-time faculty as a graduate advisor and thesis reader. And there was a discussion of whether or not I could get paid for that because they want to pay me, but I couldn't get paid. So, and I think by law and by unions, they have to pay you for the work. So there was all this negotiation on how can we work with that? And it ends up, it's going to have to be like during the summer when I'm not teaching a class. And so the, thankfully, you know, my faculty colleagues are open. But of course, then they start being like, oh, this is, this doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, no, I mean, you, you're saying it out loud, and I'm like, this is so crazy that you have a job, they want you to do more. To be an advisor on someone's thesis is a big deal, to help train the next generation. And you have to decline it because you would make too much and therefore not be able to keep your health coverage. And, you know, Josh, you, you brought up in terms of the states. Research shows that Florida has actually passed something. And so, again, like I said, you know, don't let the, the crimson jacket fool you. I don't like to be in the same realm with Alabama when it comes to certain policy decisions.
Tennessee passed. Florida and Alabama still need to get their act together. But Tennessee, kudos to Tennessee.
Lisa, you know, thank you for being here and for the work that you guys do at the Bipartisan Policy Center. There was once upon a time where the federal government had support for states to be able to develop infrastructure capacity for buy-in programs. There was like a grant program back in the day. I'm going to make a wild assumption that given where we are in this administration, that that funding is no longer available. But are there any technical assistance opportunities currently available for states? Or have they sort of wrapped that up because 49 states have already done it?
Good question. Yeah, I, I can't speak to whether there are currently, you know, any technical assistance initiatives. I, you know, imagine that there are workers at CMS who are available to support states and answer questions in this very kind of technical area. But there is a need for greater support for states that are interested in having clarification on program flexibilities, what those opportunities are for states to take advantage of existing flexibilities under current law. So greater, you know, federal support to states as they develop these programs and seek to maximize the impact and success of their programs will certainly be important going forward.
Okay. What would you say are, which should be like the two top priorities for the district? Should we invest to make this program workable and sustainable? What are the top two things we should be focusing on?
Yeah, certainly thinking about, you know, what those eligibility requirements will be for the program, whether that's, you know, thinking about the appropriate age limit or removing the age limit for the program will have a big impact on who can benefit from this program. And especially because Medicare's coverage of long-term care is so limited to short-term or acute skilled nursing home-based care that access to Medicaid's coverage of unique services such as home and community-based services is particularly important for individuals with disabilities, regardless of age, and if these individuals want to work beyond the age of 64. So I think, you know, that's one very important area. And then, of course, making sure that there is robust outreach to individuals and coordination across agencies to ensure that individuals are aware of the program and understand that this opportunity exists. Take-up across the country has been notably low due to the fact that there has not been a robust educational effort that makes sure that individuals are aware and can take full advantage of this opportunity.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you so much to this panel of witnesses. If you haven't provided your written testimony for the record, if you could just go online and upload that for us. We're going to take just like a three to four minute break really quickly. And then when we come back, we'll have our government witness who is in the room to testify. All right. Thank you. All right, and we're back. So we now have the government witness, Wayne Turnage, who is the Deputy Mayor for Health and Human Services, as well as the Director for the Department of Healthcare Finance. Before you begin, Director, I need to swear you guys in, so if you and your team can raise your right hand. All right, anyone who might testify, so I don't know if he might call a friend, wonderful. Do you swear or affirm under penalty of law that the testimony you're about to provide to the Council of the District of Columbia and this committee is the truth and whole truth and nothing but the truth? Great, all right. Were you ready, Director? Oh, you guys turn your mic on.
Good morning, Chair President Henderson, and thank you for the opportunity to discuss the dependent proposal for the Medicaid buy-in and the clarification amendment for remote patient monitoring, hereby referred to as RPM. I am joined at the table by, to my left, our Chief Medical Officer, Shemaine LaBurd. To my right, our wonderful Policy Director Eugene Sims. And I don't know if you've met the gentleman to my far right, Joe Weisfeld. He's a higher state graduate, so be nice to him, just like I. And he works in our policy innovation shop. He's always trying to get me to do all this stuff. He never talks about money. He just, we need to do this. So he does a lot of good work with his team to educate me on some of the options that, you know, Medicaid might have. I don't, I would like to do something a little bit different. I don't think there's any debate about the the benefits of both Medicaid buy-in and the remote patient monitoring. There are some, as they says, the the angels in the details, obviously. And then there's always this, we live in the shadow of what the district's finances might be. So, you know, rather than walk through, you know, both proposals, I would just like to spend maybe two, three slides talking about what the issues and concerns are. Well, I won't say concerns, issues and considerations. And then just have a back and forth between me and my team that maybe we can dig through some of the issues and get to a point where, you know, we think if this goes forward as a proposal, this is what it would look like. Is that okay for you? So I will jump to slide. It would be, I guess it would be slide seven. Wait a minute, before you do that, I think I jumped too far here. Medicaid buy-in proposal. Six. Yes, it should be slide seven. The the first question with both of these is legal sufficiency. And I know you hate this, this conversation. It's not my favorite, but, you know, we 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 do what the the law says we should do, and what is an easy resolution, as we've discussed in the past. The AG has informed us that the mayor, not the council, only the mayor has the authority to amend the Medicaid state plan. The Medicaid buy-in requires a probably several amendments to the state plan. So we want to make sure that we can get the bill to a discussion on this marriage with the city administrator and the mayor by avoiding the language that requires the mayor to modify the state plan. And it's an easy, it's an easy adjustment. And we've talked about it in the past, so I won't belabor it here. The the other issue is, and I think you all talked about this this morning, and because I was, when I was reading it, after I put the testimony together from the notes of my team, and then I was reading it again last night, and I kept thinking, well, these people are already eligible for for Medicaid, so we'll we'll skip by that. So I think what that leaves is the the important question of at what income level would you like to see this program operate? In other words, at what income level would it begin and where to be, where it would be capped, if you would cap it? Now, if you don't cap it, then we we would lose federal match for people six hundred, whose income is over six hundred percent of federal poverty level. But if you cap it below that, then it's just a matter of figuring out what the premiums and cost sharing would be. Now, I will say, and I was discussing this with my team this morning, there is a, an inherent inequity that I think we would have to think about, and certainly the council and the mayor, if it came to her. If we established a, say, an income threshold from one hundred and thirty-nine percent to five hundred percent of federal poverty, anybody in that income range with a disability could qualify for Medicaid buy-in. So they wouldn't have to go through spin-down. Now, if you had, if your income is above one hundred and thirty-eight percent, and you want to get in Medicaid, you have to spin down to the level by paying for medical bills. So we would have a two-tiered system. If you're disabled, either a qualifying disability on the SSI or a similar determination is made, and your income is between one thirty and say four hundred percent of federal poverty, you wouldn't have to spin down. You just have to pay a premium and whatever cost sharing. But if you are not disabled, but you're really sick, and you work, you know, but you you may be on, you know, you may not have a formal disability per, you know, federal government, but you you have some significant medical bills. You won't be able to get access to Medicaid until you have basically spin down your resources to the Medicaid level. So you'd have that that sort of inequity that I would like, certainly you and other members of the council to think about how we might resolve that, if we could resolve it. And I've asked my team to think about it as well. So the the there are some other details about case processing, you know, when when eligibility has to be determined by ESA. I think those are all things that if we got, you know, farther down the road, we could sit down and work out with your team about what this should look like if we could do it. And, you know, similarly, there's a, we have to be cognizant of the behavior of BHP and how they cover people, you know, up to two hundred percent of poverty. So if you created a a definition for, or an income range for eligibility that started below two, above one hundred and thirty-eight percent or below two hundred percent, we'd bump up against BHP and we'd have to figure out how that would work. Because there are people who are in that category who would be on BHP, and then we will be telling them, well, no, you can come to Medicaid through the buy-in. So those are the counter things that, you know, come to mind when we think about this particular bill. And it's, you know, it's a, you know, again, nobody, nobody questions the merits of it. It's a, it's a, you know, it's it's a noble piece of legislation. Certainly trying, with the goal of making people who are certainly, who want to work and who are disabled, not be penalized. We understand that, and certainly the last question about it, obviously, will be cost. The fiscal impact of this program becomes more difficult to determine for two reasons. One, we don't quite know how many people are out there who would fit in any category that we're going to establish. So we don't know how many people. We probably can make an effort to better identify folks who are disabled and would qualify. But if you put no income cap on it, then we would have a even more difficult time determining what the fiscal impact was. But I think, you know, if every, if if both the executive and the council agree on the merits of the policy, if it has that intuitive appeal, which it does, then the only question, once you work out the technical stuff, is how much will it cost, and can we afford it in our current budget environment? And that is, that is, those questions, obviously, you know, we can't answer today. So then I now jump to remote patient monitoring. Again, everybody understands this has a tremendous efficacy, particularly for mothers, expecting mothers and and mothers who are in postpartum. And and there, we are cognizant of the efforts to get this program up and running dating back to twenty-nine. Those efforts were slowed by really broad language and again, this legal sufficiency question that we don't like to talk about. So if you go to slide twelve, you know, there was, there's a good effort by your your team to adjust the, to address the 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 broad eligibility and scope coverage that was driving up the price of the proposal. We've done some work that if you, that that basically says if you're focused on blood pressure and glucose monitoring from expecting mothers and 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 young and and new mothers, then we, and and again, focusing on those who are high-risk, we think we've identified based on the presence of fourteen conditions, about a little over three thousand high-risk mothers, pregnant, pregnant women. My team estimates there will be a ninety percent take-up rate if you, if you put this program in place, and you would have a pretty high compliance rate because you've, we would be dropping it from, what, nineteen months to to twelve months? So you have a pretty high compliance rate. We would pay at the Medicare rate for setup equipment and monthly services. And we believe that will substantially reduce the cost of the program. So the only problem that remains is the legal sufficiency issue, which I think, again, is very easily addressed. And we talk about that again on page thirteen. So that's sort of what DHCF is with respect to both proposals. And me and my illustrious team are ready to answer any questions that you might have.
Awesome. Thank you, Director. For those who have not been privy to our previous debates on the legal sufficiency, it's a debate over one word, shall versus may. And we've, I feel like we, you and I have been having this for years, and our lawyers have been having this disagreement for years. But let's focus on the merits of the proposal as opposed to a may versus shall situation. I'm going to start with some questions on the Medicaid buy-in. Okay, so it seemed from your comments that you guys have more concern about no income limit versus if we decided to do a no age limit?
Yeah, and I'll let, you know, the experts talk. I don't, I don't see any, I haven't heard any concerns on our side about getting rid of an age limit. We are concerned about a no income limit.
Which you made point, you said we would lose the federal match for those over six hundred percent of FPL.
Yes.
Yeah, just to clarify that.
Eugene, if you just introduce yourself for the record, I know who you are, but.
Eugene Sims, I'm the Policy Director at Department of Healthcare Finance. There are four ways to implement ticket-to-work, the ticket-to-work basic, ticket-to-work, work-in, work incentive, ticket-to-work, health improvements. You can keep people even if they no longer meet the federal definition of disability. And then there's the family, the the family, the children, the Families with Disabled Children's Act. If you, in those, you can enroll individuals under eighteen, under that method. For those, if you enroll individuals above three hundred percent FPL, you use the F, you lose the federal match you would get for enrolling those folks. But generally, if you approach it, you know, be a ticket-to-work basic, ticket-to-work, work improvements, incentives, you could still get your federal match for those above three hundred percent FPL, above six hundred percent FPL.
Okay, so for the states that don't have income limits like Maryland, they're paying out of pocket, out of pocket, they, the government is just covering one hundred percent of the costs?
No, they're, they're getting their federal match because they're most likely implementing through ticket-to-work basic or ticket-to-work, work incentives. So they're getting their federal match for everyone they enroll.
Okay, is the federal match for, under these programs, the same as it would be federal match under Medicaid?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Director, you talked about the difficulty of determining the fiscal impact because of the difficulty of determining what the universe is. But somebody has this information, or at least partial. Disability services would have partial information. And then, of course, yes, there is a universe of individuals for whom are like one of the gentlemen who testified earlier today, who's using private insurance, but then paying out of pocket to cover his PCA services.
Yeah, I I think we could eventually get to a a number that represents a proxy for the universe. It just would take probably multiple data sources and take a little more time than we would normally spend on fiscal impact. I'm just saying that the concept of no income limit makes it difficult because we would obviously need a good proxy. That's why we can't do it. We could, we would figure it out and come up with an estimate, but it may take a little time.
Okay, when person applies for Medicaid and they confirm that they have a disability as defined by the Social Security Administration, are they automatically placed in an ABD group?
So it depends if you meet SSI definition of disability and you have below a certain income threshold. So you qualify for social security income, we automatically place you on Medicaid. If you are above that SSI threshold, which a lot of these high-income earners would be, you have to apply in a firmly state you have a disability or be determined by us that have a disability, and we will put you in, if you don't qualify for a Magi group per se, we will put you in the ABD category, especially if you're sixty-five plus and only have a hundred percent of the federal poverty level. But if you are just applying for Medicaid, you seemingly you have a disability, but your income is at a certain threshold where you qualify for Magi, we can just put you in a Magi group because you're still under the Magi income thresholds.
So then that begs the question, right? You had mentioned like, oh, we would have to confirm your eligibility. Would we have to do that for anyone who was applying into the Medicaid buy-in program? Because technically, they would be above our traditional income limits for Medicaid, so then what does that process look like?
So right, so we, you know, in a few short weeks, we'll be lowering our Magi threshold for most adults to one hundred and thirty-eight percent of the federal poverty level. We'll have our kind of neighbor plan for those one hundred and thirty-eight percent above the basic health plan, Healthy DC. But this category, as as written, would cover those folks above one thirty-eight if they have the disability and the earned income. So we would just need a way, when we determine eligibility for all those folks, given these different parts, that they're signaling to us that, hey, I want to apply for ticket-to-work. I don't want to go into BHP because I'm under two hundred percent FPL and I'm above one thirty-eight. I want to pay a premium and come into Medicaid. We would just see the, and it's, it's not going to be impossible. We would just need a way to. We would just need a way to have folks affirm to us like, hey, I intend to apply for ticket to work program.
You know, I know it's not going to be impossible because forty-nine other states figured this out.
There's a.
So, I mean, you guys obviously haven't been there for forever. I don't know, Wayne, you know, maybe a little bit more, no, but. Happened, how did DC sort of just get left behind on this, on this train?
And you know, I've been there since twenty eleven. And I will be honest, and not until twenty nineteen, maybe a little bit earlier, was it even raised as a, the possibility of proposal? Well, we have, we were so focused on expanding Medicaid uh, by raising the income thresholds as high as we could, the city could afford to cover as many people as possible, that, you know, everything else sort of, um, you know, took a backseat. We are, we are, we were before uh, we had to face recent uh, budget uh, troubles. We had the highest eligibility level in the country.
Yeah.
And that's what we, that's what our focus was on. And um, you know, the thinking, thinking then was our eligibility levels, our income eligibility levels are so high that we could, you know, capture, you know, wo- working with the exchange and commercial insurance. We could insure virtually everybody in the city. And we did, we had a ninety-seven percent insurance rate. We didn't deal with the uh, you know, the challenges that come from commercial insurance for people who have disabilities. And, and so that's kind of how it unfolded. And then our attention was focused back on Medicaid buy-in when uh, uh, when your predecessor was, was in that seat. And when we got to the point of analysis, we're not even sure where it broke down, but it broke down on, I think it broke down on cost, but I, I need to go back and look at, you know,
Okay.
how we got here.
And it's, it, we're here now.
Yeah.
We're having the conversation. It's just sort of uh, kind of frustrating, I'm like, wow, there was federal, federal money that was available to help states build capacity to do this and we kind of, we left that money um, on the table in some ways. I'm not sure Eugene or, or Director, if you guys have this kind of information, but of the total beneficiaries in the Medicaid age-blind and disabled group. So that's ABD for folks, I realize that we were using acronyms without providing explanation. Do you all know how many of those beneficiaries are employed currently?
I don't think we have that information, but we could, we could maybe see who has earned income and maybe get a idea of who's employed, but I don't have that number.
Okay, all right. And then what about, clearly, we've been sending notices of termination and, and whatnot as eligibility limits have changed. Do we, have you all broken down how many folks in this particular category have received a termination?
We can, we don't, we, we don't have it in front of us, but that's so- something that we could do.
Okay.
For the ABD adults?
Yes.
None of them, their eligibility is not changing. So they are age-blind, disabled, a hundred percent of the FPL.
Yeah.
Uh, or sixty-five and above, their, their eligibility is not changing uh, under Medicaid. It's just the childless adults above one thirty-eight and the parent care ticket relatives above one thirty-eight. So we've sent no terminations to them around the January one, twenty twenty-six change.
Okay, all right. I think one thing we'll also ask for follow-up is around what our current per member per month spend is for this group? Yeah.
Although we have sent no terminations, if they don't renew, they will be dropped. And I don't know how many, we, I, we can check to see if anybody has dropped uh, because of failure to uh, submit a, um, a, an application for redetermination.
Do we have that information on, so when you all started to do redeterminations, again, post the public health, federal public health emergency, there was a dashboard on the website that was able to sort of keep track of renewals, who was losing for administrative reasons, et cetera. Have we kept that updated in this sort of new, where we are?
Believe the dashboard is relaunched, um, and we're going to be working over time to add additional detail
Okay.
to the, the relaunch, but I think, I think, I believe it is backup. And we do have our monthly enrollment reports as well, but we do have that information if uh, the committee has a question about uh, the number of ABD folks who are dropping for, you know, failure to renew uh, reasons.
Okay. Let me ask some questions about, I was gonna say program cost, but we kind of already talked about that. I'm gonna signal now, I want to work with you guys and I want to work with CFO and the Department of Disability Services for us to try to get an estimate of how much this is going to cost. And I know that's going to take longer than a regular fist, and I know you're going through the regular budget process and whatnot. But I also feel like, given I, given what I'm hearing in terms of the complexities of this, I can't wait until March or April to ask you to start working on this, just to try to understand.
We'll start today.
What it, what it would cost. What operational changes would Healthcare Finance need to implement to implement a, a buy-in program?
Sure, so there's a premium collection. Uh, DC Medicaid has no premiums for any of our enrollment groups today. So we would need to establish a, a mechanism and process to collect premiums from individuals enrolled in ticket to buy-in, um, adding some process and, you know, eligibility changes to our system as, you know, follows adoption of any new eligibility group. And you know, just on the application and things, just making sure we're, we're having a way for folks to signal that they do intend to um, apply for the ticket to work program. Uh, those are the, the major changes.
Right. Now, you know how much we've spent on DCAST. Are you telling me that there is not a, something we can add that allows us to start receiving a premium?
Well, yeah. I don't think DCAST has, it's like a, well, I don't, I don't want to speak for what uh, out-of-the-box functionality DCAST has, but we would, if DCAST has a out-of-the-box premium collection function, we would need to turn that on because it has not been on to date for any of our, our programs.
Okay. Think it was like, three football stadiums we've spent on DCAST?
Yes.
Yeah, so, uh, we go home. But I know you're.
I'm sure that we can, uh, if it doesn't have the functionality, writing the rules to allow us to do it shouldn't be that complex.
Okay. The bill would allow for participants to apply for a hardship claim. Do you all have that uh, within your processes now, under Medicaid?
A hardship claim?
Mm-hmm, so it's a request submitted if, well, I guess you, okay, no, you wouldn't. No, you wouldn't, because you don't have a portal that would accept, accept this. But it essentially like, if someone has a change in their financial circumstances and have an inability to pay, that they would be able to sort of go through a process. But I'm, I've answered my own question, you don't have that.
Right. They have inability to pay, their incomes would drop and they could probably establish eligibility without.
Right, but I, that would be something outside of legislation and more in terms of rules of engagement, right? If you have a change in, if you have a change in income, to be able to submit that to Healthcare Finance, to be able to.
Well, they're supposed to do that now. If your income changes for the uh, for the better or for the worse, um, we, we should know about it if it's a potentially, uh, if it potentially impacts your eligibility. For Medicaid, unlike Alliance, we, we do have a, a gold standard of data that we go to, to check your income and to check the veracity of what you're reporting through the uh, hub. But, um, so in, in theory, if you, if you have a hardship that reduces your income, you should certainly report it and you may qualify uh, for Medicaid based on that reduction.
Okay. I'm, I think I know the answer, we're just gonna ask it on the record. There wouldn't be any changes in terms of billing codes or anything like that. It would just be a situation of once you're in Medicaid, you're in. Or would there be specific limitations or otherwise for this particular population who is buying in?
Yeah, they, they would be buying in through the uh, state plan fee-for-service uh, program.
Fee-for-service, okay.
Yes, and so I don't know if we would need to add any codes because we, we present and provide those services. I don't, we have, will we have to add anything?
No, I, I don't think we'd have to add anything. I think most of these folks would have primary insurance ready. So you know, there'd be some coordination of benefits to happen. But uh, as the legislation is written, my understanding as a strategy is they would just be entitled to state plan services. So you know, as we expand and, you know, shrink the state plan, they would be entitled to those services.
Okay.
I don't know if we would plan any particular changes as it relates to this group.
All right. Director, you mentioned fee-for-service model. Can you elaborate on why that, that would be preferred over managed care?
Several reasons. One, if this, you're talking about a population that's disabled.
Yeah.
If you put them in the managed care program, it'll probably blow the rates uh, through the roof. We'd have to pay much, much higher capitated payment rates. And we have a risk corridor that we, we, we have in place with managed care where we pay for, we share with them the cost if they go above, I think ninety-two percent. Uh, they share with us their, their, their gain, if they drop below eighty-five percent. It would just, you, it would require our actuary to, to rethink the, the um, the, the, the ban of the risk corridor because we're bringing in a population that is, you know, that is uh, uh, has some significant uh, medical issues and it, it would change uh, you know, the impact on our, on our rate setting. Fee-for-service, we don't have to worry about that. We don't pay a capitated rate every month, we only pay when the services are used. And so for a population that is um, uh, disabled, then it's, it's probably the preferred way to go in my judgment.
But fee-for-service would still enable for the transportation services as well as PCA?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
And Chairperson Henderson, that was my interpretation of the legislation as drafted, that uh, the intent would be for this to be a fee-for-service program. If, if I've misinterpreted that.
That, we thought that that would probably be better, but again, if we're wrong, I will ask the question. In terms of what we know about the MCO per, per member per month fee.
Yeah, and it, it will be, fee-for-service will be better in, in our judgment, we agree with you all on that.
Okay. Hang on. Um, several stakeholders testified about the current bill language excluding the home and community-based waiver recipients from the program. Is that Healthcare Finance's interpretation?
Yes, uh, the waivers, individuals in the seeking waiver services would be excluded. Long-term care services, which would include waiver services excluded, and those, uh, they'd be precluded from getting managed care services. That was our read of the bill.
Okay, is there any reasons that some of these waiver participants might want to enroll?
If they, go ahead, so you go, no, you go right here.
Couple of reasons, if you're qualifying for the waiver and you have to spend down because you have a high income.
Yeah.
Um, getting access to waiver services without having to spend down, but rather contribute uh, a, a smaller premium uh, would be an improvement in how you access care probably. So I would imagine that would be the incentive for folks who want access to a buy-in program, but need waiver services. They would access that waiver uh, instead of sp- having to spend down, paying a small premium to get into the waiver.
I mean, I.
I would just say be cognizant of the fact that those kind of changes will increase the fiscal cost of the bill. Because you would, we would lose the spend-down that you're carrying. And there are caps on, uh, one of the DDS programs has a uh, uh, will, will have as a result of budget uh, reductions, have a um, uh, a, a, an enrollment cap. And so if we wanted to open that program back up, it wouldn't just be available for people who were, um, you know, potentially benefiting through buy-in, but it would be, also be available for folks who were, you know, previously frozen out. You know, it is, it is, it would be a desirable adjustment, but it, we just have to be cognizant of what it would cost.
Yeah, but there could also be a situation where someone is currently doing the spend-down to be eligible for a waiver, and then they decide, um, Medicaid buy-in is actually better for them.
Right.
And like, right, from a quality of life standpoint and otherwise, um, anytime I get those stories of individuals who are, a person has gotten really sick and this idea like, okay, I gotta, I gotta figure out how to get rid of my house. I gotta figure out how to get rid of my car and like, you know, transfer or do something with all of my assets just to be able to afford health coverage.
Well, you, 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 you're right. The, the, um, first of all, they, they wouldn't have to worry so much about the house or car under a resource test. But they would have to spend down.
Some things and.
If they had, if they had assets other than a, a car and a house that were significant, and they would certainly count against them. You know, and, and there are, um, you know, Medicaid has these asset transfer rules that are designed to pres- to prevent people with significant assets beyond a house and a car from gaining healthcare at the public's expense. So some of what you see as difficulty is intentional. Back when I was a, uh, during my, my glory days, when I was an analyst and didn't have to worry about politics. I did a study on asset transfers and, you know, what it looked like for Medicaid. And some of the strategies, you know, there were, we had people, this is when I was in Virginia. We had people who, who had assets of close to a million dollars, but could walk up to the Medicaid window and present based on a very skillful um, handling of their affairs by an elder law attorney who qualified for Medicaid. They have a million dollars passed into their family and they get on Medicaid. The Medicaid would be paying their costs at over a hundred some thousand dollars a year or even more. So those assets, uh, those asset restriction rules are there for a reason. They try to make it humane by not touching your house unless it has an excessive value and a car, because you need a car for transportation. But there is, it is frowned upon uh, for people who have substantial assets outside of a house and a car to get access to healthcare paid for by the uh, taxpayer and those assets are preserved for their family members. That is uh, something that federal Medicaid law tries to prevent.
Mm-hmm, I, I can understand that. I would also say though, and this is not for us, but you know, more their issue is that, um, we could always ask the question, when was the last time that CMS or Congress took a look at the income limits, right? Given what the cost of private insurance and healthcare looks like today. But again, that's not. You know, and so I think we kind of have to, to think about it. We get some calls sometimes, the committee does, from individuals who have issues in terms of Medicare. Or like, oh, you know, Medicare is, it's not our wheelhouse because, you know, it's a completely federal-run program. But when you hear about some of the income limits and otherwise on that particular program, and I'm like, that doesn't even match the reality of
Yeah.
what it costs. So yes, I might have five hundred thousand dollars in terms of assets outside of my house, outside of my car, and also my medical bills would wipe that out in five years.
Yeah, no, I, I, look, I, I, I fully understand where you're coming from. The last time, I would probably make the argument, joking, correct me if I'm wrong. The last time the Congress probably looked at eligibility thresholds within, in a meaningful way was with the, when they got rid of the restriction that you couldn't get in Medicaid uh, unless you had a child or were disabled. Uh, so they made people who are, you know, childless adults, as we call them, and you could get in up to, you know, in our case, up to two hundred percent of federal poverty. Before those changes were made, I don't care how poor you were. Uh, if you were an adult without a child, uh, you couldn't get on Medicaid and you could have significant uh, insurance issues. In some states, particularly here in the South, I'll give you an example. In Virginia, just, you know, when I came to DC in twenty eleven, if you made, if you, if you were with a child, if you had a child and you made more than thirty percent of federal poverty, you couldn't get on Medicaid unless you were disabled. I mean, that's how tight the uh, eligibility restrictions were. And you see that as you go further south. Now, you know, most states, again, some federal states, some southern states excluded, not only allowed to two hundred, it used to be two hundred percent of federal poverty, but they, you can come in under a childless adult provision. Like, if you have significant assets, even under the childless adult provisions, uh, you're gonna have to spend down to the income level.
Yeah, I, I think that, um, that's always sort of the, I get the idea of wanting to protect the public funds.
Yes.
But then on the other side of that, then there needs to be some other option that allows for people to be able to do this on their own in a way that, and I, um, and I'm glad that I heard you say sort of at the beginning, in terms of the case of this particular bill, it seems crazy to me for us to have folks who are capable, who desire to work.
Yeah.
And then they're like, but I can't because I need to keep my healthcare. That's not really what I feel like even some of the conservatives, the, the conservative, the conservative would want in terms of a design of a program for somebody to um, forego work just to be able to afford healthcare. And I think, uh, Josh Basili, who uh, testified earlier, he said, this is not just a disability bill, it's a jobs bill, a marriage bill. Which I think is something key for us to keep in mind. So, um, I hope that we can continue to work and have conversations on this one, Director. Um, and we can bring in the other agencies who might have the data information that would help make it possible for us to get to an idea of realistically speaking, well, realistic, an estimate, but a good one. of realistically speaking, well, realistic, an estimate, but a good one of how much this might cost.
Yeah, I, I, we certainly want to, um, uh, take a hard look at that. We have, um, I think the finest data scientists in this, in city government. Um, we give, we've given them some pretty expensive tools and we're gonna try to give them even more. Because when you call and say, I need this information in five minutes, or the mayor says, I need this information and, you know, then they, we have to find a way to come up with the data.
Your data people are fabulous.
They're, they're outstanding. So, and, and don't, don't recruit them for any of, any of those.
I'll send her a, a flower or some cookies for the holidays because they really have been doing a lot of really, um, this stuff is complicated and I know that it could sometimes for the public is like, no, 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 this is straightforward. But again, we do have to pay for it in some ways.
Yes.
And I do feel, but I feel like in something like a Medicaid, uh, buy-in program is that we have to counter what the cost will be from what the benefit is on the other side. Right? I've got somebody who is a whole professor who is declining classes or the opportunity to be somebody's advisor because I can't make too much money. And I'm sure from the university standpoint, they're like, this is crazy.
Yeah.
Um, because we are required to pay you for your work, so you can't just volunteer, um, in that regard. So we have to kind of figure that out. All right, let's turn to the other bill, uh, and hopefully we can, um, get through some of this fairly quickly. So let's start sort of broadly. Are there any patient monitoring services that healthcare finance currently covers, both through fee-for-service or managed care? And just introduce yourself for the record.
Hi, Joe Weisfeld, the Director of the Healthcare Reform and Innovation Administration. Uh, so in terms of coverage, there are, uh, some managed care plans that offer, uh, cover remote patient monitor services under either administrative or what is often referred to as a value-add, uh, contract. So they've decided that it is a valuable enough, uh, activity, even though it's not covered on our fee schedule, that they will cover it.
Okay, um, and so during the F Y twenty-six budget hearings, we discussed that M C Os, some were paying for it. No funding was included, an extra, um, for the M C Os that do provide some of this, do we have any details in terms of like, what's the trigger? So is it hypertension? Is it for glucose or what type of pieces?
Uh, we can look, we can look into that. I don't think we have, uh, that answer today.
Okay. Dr. Boy.
Dr. Shemane Laber, Chief Medical Officer, board-certified internal medicine and lifestyle medicine. What, um, typically what will trigger it when you're thinking about a Holter monitor, you're worried about blood pressure, um, obviously glucose monitor, uh, for sugar. One of the things to understand though is with certain conditions like pulmonary embolism, postpartum hemorrhage, there are certain triggers or certain, um, um, bio-signs that we use. So tachycardia or fast heart rate, which would be picked up by a Holter monitor. Blood pressure would drop in, in, um, potentially pulmonary, uh, embolism or hemorrhage. And so having those tools, uh, would be used to measure them. In addition to a pulse oximeter, uh, same thing with pulmonary embolism, your oxygenation drops having a pulmonary embolism. So those are some of the, um, things that they look for or think about in a high-risk patient. So in high-risk patients, you're thinking someone getting a pulmonary embolism, they could be obese, have advanced maternal age. Someone at risk for pulmonary hemorrhage could have had a large, um, fetus or baby because of di- gestational diabetes. Um, in terms of blood pressure, someone that has hypertension either before pregnancy or develop it during pregnancy with eclam- with preeclampsia, they would be able to measure that throughout and postpartum where there would be other triggers. In addition to that, um, cardiac arrest, heart attack from postpartum hemorrhage, you would see rapid changes in blood pressure, pulse ox with those monitors. So having those monitors during pregnancy as well as postpartum would help with preventing, um, maternal mortality. In addition to that, which I didn't hear today, infant mortality. When you have, um, some of those conditions in complications with advanced, uh, maternal age, obesity, um, high blood pressure, the infant may, um, die and the mother may survive. So understanding that as well, we're also affecting infant mortality.
Okay, um, have we heard feedback from the M C Os about using this? I mean, they're not getting a reimbursement, if you will. This is something that's a value add for them. But I have to imagine, I saw Karen Dale last night, that they are seeing the value in this, otherwise they wouldn't be doing it.
Yes, I, and we've had discussions with baby scripts. I know that they have been trying to work with the managed care organizations to try and figure out, in addition to kind of talking to us to figure out how we could cover it. So yes, there, there is definitely, um, a, a value in them covering it and they are definitely concerned. In addition to that, the federally qualified health centers, I believe, may have some grants that cover, um, some of these services in addition to some of the hospital, uh, association or sorry, the, um, M F A and, um, SIBLY, I believe. So there is, you know, um, there is definitely knowledge and awareness that these, um, monitors are definitely affecting infant and maternal mortality.
Okay, um, do we know from claims data or information from the M C Os, how many M C O, um, enrollees are currently experiencing hypertension or gestational diabetes?
We can get that information.
Okay, um, it would also be good to get it for, uh, the fee-for-service and alliance, uh, patients as well.
The one caveat is if our data is claims-based, so if they don't, they have the condition and don't get treatment for it, then we won't know it. Um, because we just don't have the data to know people, their health conditions unless they go and file a claim.
Right. I'm hopeful though that if there is a person who has, uh, gestational diabetes, their doctor is treating them for it.
If they're going to their doctor.
Well, yeah, I know, we're making broad assumptions here, but, and, and I guess that is the point. I'll say sort of as a caveat, we know that no data information will be perfect or complete. Uh, but it can give us a snapshot in time, um, to kind of help us understand a little bit on that. Okay, um, how, now, I could ask the same question to D C Health and I know what they're gonna say, although they're a couple of years behind on their data. But how do you all collect data related to preterm births, maternal morbidity, morbidity, or other adverse outcomes that happen in terms of enrollees who are pregnant? Do you guys look at that data?
We do, and we look at it in a couple of different ways.
Okay.
Um, you know, one, there are a number of, uh, C M S core set quality measures that have to be reported. And so, um, our, again, wonderful data team is, uh, doing a lot of that, uh, data. Um, to Director Turner's point, uh, when we have, uh, things that are claims-based, a lot easier for us to do those types of analyses when we have to include other types of information like clinical or administrative data coming from different data sources, uh, not only sources that we have. So there are just limitations, uh, outside of kind of claims-based quality measures. So we do quite a bit, um, uh, quality reviews, um, uh, on a regular basis with our managed care plans, uh, with, uh, uh, C M S and their requirements. Um, our F Q H Cs have their requirements to HERSA that they have to monitor as well. Um, one of the things my team does is oversees the health information exchange. We're trying to bring more and more information, uh, in there so that providers can see real-time inform, uh, uh, quality information. And then the last thing I'll say, within our transforming maternal health initiative, um, we have been able to hire a few new folks. Um, and it's a big part of our work is to get a little bit more of the, uh, a deeper understanding of what's happening within our, uh, maternal health community. And so I think those were the main places. I don't know if you wanna talk about the, anything else.
So I, let me ask you this, Joe. Um, to what extent are your data teams talking to D C Health data teams? And sharing sort of this information back and forth?
Yeah, you know, I don't wanna speak for, um, uh, April and her team, uh, but we work pretty closely with them, um, on a number of different, uh, uh, data sharing agreements, requests, et cetera. Um, and so I think we work pretty closely.
Okay.
The way it typically works, if they get a request from me or, um, the executive office, um, or from, you know, the council, uh, and it's outside of the, um, the bounds of our data system, they immediately, um, work with their sister agencies to see if they have the data that they could use, that we could use to supplement what's in our, our, uh, Medicaid database or alliance database. So they work with them pretty regularly, um, and, because we do, um, stress them a lot about, uh, going beyond what we have in claims data.
Okay. I mean, I will say this, I know you're hearing your capacity as healthcare finance, but obviously you're definitely made for health and human services. It is very, um, frustrating that I can get a report from the March of Dimes about how the district is doing with maternal health. And I've got nothing on our own data to say, is the March of Dimes right? Or are they wrong or in the wrong direction? Because we are so behind in processes own maternal health data. We haven't put out any new data on maternal health in the district since twenty-twenty-two. By the time we get to data about twenty-twenty-four, it might be twenty-thirty because we are so behind it. But I'm like, we have data sources. You have claims data. You have, um, data from the hospitals, but what, what's going on? And so I just am like, ah, don't worry, we're gonna have a hearing on maternal health in January, so we'll talk about it.
The cycle of D C Health, where they do, uh, sort of the health of the city, I forgot the name of the precise report. And they updated, I, I thought it was every, every year, I thought, but maybe I'm wrong. I'll double check.
They're behind.
It's a, yeah, it's, it's, it's a pretty comprehensive report if they can get it up to date. Uh, uh, it, it gives you, uh, a, a massive number of indicators of health across the city. And I believe maternal health is one, but I'll, I'll double check, but, uh.
Okay, can I, um, ask about the before times? So when this legislation first passed, you guys sort of testified about this. How, how was the assumption made that that bill, the twenty-twenty bill, was meant to cover, um, nine months of prenatal coverage and then nineteen-point-five months of postpartum coverage? Nineteen-point-five part seems unique.
Uh, it, uh, the nineteen-point-five is pre, uh, prenatal and postpartum. So seven and a half months, it was assuming that an individual would start, um, uh, at six.
Oh, I see. So that was combined. That was not as, okay, all right. You got that? All right, cool. Um, okay, uh, Dr. Bur, what clinical recommendations exist for how long hypertension should be monitored in the postpartum period?
It's Dr. Laber, sorry.
Laber, sorry.
Yes, um, typically when a woman has, um, preeclampsia or subsequent eclampsia with laboratory values, the concern is that they will develop high blood pressure postpartum. So it is recommended to follow blood pressure at a minimum postpartum every month or so, then every three months. And then following, depending on what the blood pressure does, if it actually produces and normalizes, then the patient would be on a six-month. So it really depends on the patient and medication. So if the patient remains on medication, then it's something that would be followed every three months if they're controlled. If they're not controlled, the once a month, they should be in the office having their blood pressure checked. Okay, so twelve months. So typically, you know, with a, with preeclampsia or eclampsia, a lot of women, once they've had the baby, they lose all the baby, the water, the weight, their blood pressure will return to normal, but we do follow, uh, because there is a tendency, there are increased risk for developing hypertension as well as developing preeclampsia or eclampsia for subsequent pregnancies.
Okay, um, all right, let's talk about the financial impact piece really quickly. So Director, um, in the twenty-twenty bill estimated that the F Y twenty-four local cost share amount would be, um, three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. So a total of eight hundred and twenty-six thousand. Again, this was from the twenty-twenty, um, fist. Your testimony referenced a cost of approximately one point nine million. Now, is that for one year of implementation or is that across the financial plan?
I think it's one year. It's one year.
For the local portion?
No, local portion, yeah.
Okay, it's like, let's be.
The local portion, yeah.
That many people who are in the city for.
Uh, one, yeah, go ahead.
The, uh, one thing that, uh, changed between that earlier fist and later was the cost of equipment, which is a big portion of, uh, the expense here. And so, uh, in, uh, remote patient monitoring, those are, you know, some specialized pieces of equipment, uh, uh, digital, uh, to be able to digitally share information with your provider.
Was cost of equipment not included in the first fist?
It was not.
Got it. Thank you. Okay, um, if you guys can give us the breakout of the local share versus federal.
Well, the, in the testimony, the equipment, six seventy-four is local, setup fee is twenty-seven local. And then the monthly services is one point two local.
Okay, and that's for this year? Well.
I think this is for a, 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 a given fiscal year.
Yeah, it was based on F Y twenty-four, so this, you know, uh, there have been changes in, um, eligibility since then. But it was based on, uh, uh, eligibility and assumption takes, uh, from F Y twenty-four.
Okay, right. So this is a little bit different than F Y twenty-four because we are trying to narrow. So, um, hopefully we can get a new fist.
You're trying, you mean narrow the, the scope in terms of what's gonna be monitored or?
Yes.
Reduce the number. See, I, I, yeah, and I thought this reflected a, um, the reduced scope in certain, um, you know, beyond what we had originally talked about. I thought this reflected the reduced scope. But are you telling me it's that?
I, no, it, it, uh, a few things are probably gonna go in both directions. So, uh, the twelve-month, the twelve-month piece that is now postpartum, uh, is going to be, uh, likely longer than what we did in this, you know, internal assess, uh, analysis. Because we had gone from nineteen-point-five months to twelve months, uh, based on conversations that, uh, we had back and forth with your, uh, staff. So that's one, you know, that will go this direction. Uh, the fourteen conditions that we're talking about was based on the broad or language. And so with this more narrow language, we will, in, you know, kind of an internal analysis and then, uh, I imagine then a fist, uh, we'll work with Dr. Laber and, and the clinical team to perhaps narrow some of those, um, conditions.
Okay, all right, um, I think that we are, um, the transforming maternal health model, are we on track to meet the twenty-thirty?
I, in terms of remote patient monitoring or more generally?
Just in general?
Yeah, you know, so we're.
I feel like we're putting a lot on like, well, we're gonna get there when we get to the T I M A. All right, that's taking us.
They always tell me.
Yes, well, I also happen to be the, the project director for T I M A, so I do.
You're the guy.
But, uh, uh, we are on track. Um, uh, we are doing a lot, a lot behind the scenes, a lot with our community at this point. Um, the way the model really works is the first three years, we have a number of milestones that we have to meet for C M S. Um, the funding that we get is contingent on meeting those milestones and we have to reapply every year to continue to get those. Um, we just finished our application for the second year of funding, so, you know, we should be carrying back from C M S shortly. We talk with our, uh, partners at C M S, uh, bi-weekly. Um, we've gotten very good feedback in terms of really being one of the more, um, active and advanced states in terms of meeting the, uh, requirements of the model. Um, and there's a lot for the first three years, but in terms of where we end up going in kind of the fourth and the fifth year when we're changing payment models.
Yeah.
That's really the big lift and a lot of that is being directed by C M S and they have not shared full information at this point. So we're using the opportunity to try to, um, help inform them how they should be thinking about this.
Okay, is there, would there ever be a, a opportunity for us to use T I M A funds for remote patient monitoring?
So the funding limitations with T I M A is you can't use the cooperative, uh, agreement funding for services that are Medicaid coverable services. You can do things to help support infrastructure, planning, other pieces that, uh, 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 or even, you know, pilots, but you can't pay for services that would be otherwise, um, uh, reimbursable under a state plan amendment.
What about setup?
Setup is one of those things that we're covering, uh, would cover under, uh, the state plan. But in terms of if we were to perhaps, um, do some pilot type of projects, uh, that perhaps could be one of the things that we've launched, um, last, uh, this year or continuing next year. And then, uh, we'll continue on the third, uh, really, we'll continue through the first seven years of the program, uh, is ability to use incentive funds for, uh, completing quality improvement projects, participating in, um, technical assistance programs, et cetera. Um, in the third year, there's, uh, uh, the largest chunk of money available. Um, and we think that's probably an opportunity for exactly that type of project, maybe pilot, uh, pilot, uh, an idea at a small scale and, and grow it.
Okay, all right, um, I think we're okay. We'll have some follow-up questions, obviously, on some of the data points that we talked about. Um, I think it would also be helpful for us to know which of the M C Os provide remote patient monitoring already and which don't. Um, us, well, and do they have limitations, right? They only are using it for. as, well, and do they have limitations, right? They only are using it for they're piloting it, it's a special population, otherwise. Um, Director, is there anything you wanna ask to, on either one of these bills of questions I haven't asked you?
I don't think there's anything that uh, I would add just to emphasize the point that we think both bills have considerable program merit. Um, the challenge is, I stated, we'll be working out the details. And then once those details are worked out, determining in conjunction with um, CA and, and the mayor, whether or not um, we have the fiscal wherewithal to absorb um, these two new initiatives. But they are very um, laudable in terms of um, public policy.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you guys for being here. Um, this does conclude today's hearing. I wanna thank all of the witnesses who testified. Um, as well as Deputy Mayor, you and your team uh, for the robust, discuss, robust discussion, but also all the conversations that you all, your team has had with my team prior to introduction and even to this point. Um, a lot of people only see this part of the interaction. They don't see the conversations that happened before. Um, and helping us sort of make sure that we're on the right track and on some of the technical parts of this because we wanna make sure that the implementation works well if we're able to move forward. Um, so for anyone who is not or could not attend today or was not able to speak, uh, we're gonna accept public testimony until Monday, December twenty-ninth at five PM. Uh, you may submit your written testimony on the Council's Hearing Management System website at DCCouncil.gov. Um, the Health Committee will hold its um, uh, next meeting. I think this is our last hearing of 2025, um, on Monday, December fifteenth. Uh, we're holding a hearing on Bill twenty-six dash four-three-eight, the Medical Debt Mitigation Amendment Act of 2025. Um, I feel like we've, we've done one final round with like all of our agencies. So yesterday was DBH was here, today you guys are here, on Monday, healthcare, uh, Department of Health will be here. Um, but this is my opportunity to say happy holidays, Director.
Same to you.
Hope I don't have to call you for uh, anything in the, in the next few weeks here. But uh, with that, um, the time is twelve sixteen PM and this hearing is adjourned. Thank you.